Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Jen Wallison and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council's August 22 special city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. For those in virtual attendance, please note that there is a globe icon near the hand feature on your screen. This will allow you to listen to tonight's meeting in Spanish. Our interpreters this evening are Lorna Silva, Javier Morone, Angela Tilden, and Gabriela Zayas Alom. Thank you for your time and services today.
Muy buenas noches. Para aquellos que nos acompañan de forma virtual, noten que hay un icono de globo cerca del icono de la mano en su pantalla, y de esa forma van a poder escuchar la interpretación al español en esta noche de la reunión. Nuestros interpretes de esta noche son Lorna Silva, Javier Morone, Angela Tilden, y Gabriela Zayas Alom. Muchas gracias a todos por su tiempo y servicios.
Thank you. Please note that public speaker comment time may be limited depending on how many speakers we have. Also, I'd like to point out that tonight's agenda was amended, removing the Brown Act location at Stockton, California. If you had planned to participate from that location, please call into this meeting at 669-900-6833 and use the meeting ID number 881-7306-2781. Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor is using Assembly Bill 2449, Emergency Circumstances, to participate in tonight's meeting. Government Code Section 549, 54.2, and City Council Policy CC 20012 permit non-agendized items to be added to the agenda only if the city council makes findings that: One, the need to consider the item arose after the posting of the agenda. And two, there is a need to take immediate action at this meeting of the city council. These findings must be approved by a four-fifth vote. If less than five members of the city council are present, the findings require a unanimous vote of those present. The item, use of AB 2449, Emergency Circumstances, arose after the posting of the agenda, and there is a need to take immediate action at this meeting. Vice Mayor Taylor, can you please provide a general description of the circumstances relating to your need to appear remotely and disclose whether any other people over 18 years old are present in the room and the general nature of your relationship with that individual, if any?
Thank you, Mayor Wallison. I will be participating under AB 2449 due to illness, my own, and there is no one in the room over 18 or under 18.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Taylor. So therefore, in accordance with Government Code 54953-B2A, when one or more city council member participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call vote will be taken in alphabetical order based on last names. Can I have a motion and a second to add the use of AB 2449, Emergency Circumstances, to tonight's agenda? I'll move.
I would second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Wallison and a second by City Council Member Dower to add an emergency item for the use of Assembly Bill 2449 to the agenda. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Dower.
Yes.
City Council Member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Wallison.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And can I get a motion and a second to approve the remote participation under AB 2449, Emergency Circumstances, for Vice Mayor Taylor?
I so move.
I second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Dower, a second by City Council Member Nash to approve the remote participation under AB 2449, Emergency Circumstances, for Vice Mayor Taylor. Any further city council question or discussion?
Actually, I just want to make sure you said that we would do roll call vote by last names. I thought the default was going to be commonly used first names.
I'm following the script in my mayor's notes.
Could have been an error from the city clerk of using last opposed to first.
As long as that's understood, that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council Member Combs. So given that the error was my error, is it okay if I continue with the last name or should we revert back to our default of first name? Looking at it, maybe our city attorney? Is it okay to go back to our default of first name?
Yeah, there's no legal standard on this.
Thank you so much. So I will do roll call vote by commonly known first name, City Council Member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
City Council Member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Dower.
Yes.
Mayor Wallison.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And so for those members of the public who are wondering what we just did, that was a regulatory requirement under a new state law regarding remote participation of city council members. So it's a little archaic, but thank you for bearing with us as we follow state law. We're now going to move on to roll call, and I would like to introduce city council members and staff present. We've already seen Vice Mayor Cecilia Taylor. She is participating remotely. We have city council members Drew Combs, Maria Dour, and Betsy Nash with us as well. Staff present here today include our city manager, Justin Murphy, our assistant city manager, Stephen Stoltay, our city attorney, Nira Dordy, and the one who's running the show here is our city clerk, Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wallison. So at this time, I would like to echo the welcome to our special August 22 city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on tonight's agenda item, if you are participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment on the item, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. You're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. If participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. That concludes my instructions at this time. Mayor Wallison, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. All right, we are moving on to C, Special Business. Tonight's special business is a study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation, which is also available at the back of the room. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council and planning commission, oh, sorry, the city council, will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take an action on items addressed at this study session. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item eventually returns to city council for action. We have one item on the agenda tonight, that study session item C1, review and provide feedback on potential zoning ordinance, specific plan, and conforming general plan amendments associated with the adopted 23 to 31 Housing Element. And to introduce this interesting topic is our principal planner, Tom Smith. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Wallison and city council members. I have a presentation that I will pull up here to share with you. And I'm joined this evening by Mary Wagner, Assistant City Attorney, Deanna Chow, the Assistant Community Development Director, Arnold Mamorilla, who is the city's architectural consultant on these zoning changes in the specific plan, and Jeff Bradley from InGroup, who is part of the Housing Element consultant team. So before we go through the changes, I'll give you just a brief project background. The city council adopted the Housing Element on January 31 of this year, and the Housing Element is a plan for the city's housing needs for an eight-year period from 2023 to 2031, and it includes an inventory of sites that could support development of housing throughout that eight-year period, as well as goals, policies, and programs to improve equity and reduce disparities in housing throughout the community. The city's regional housing needs allocation, which we call RENA for short, is nearly 3,000 units through 2031, and of those units, almost 1,500 must be affordable at the lower and moderate income levels. The Housing Element contains programs that commit the city to implement zoning changes to help the city meet its RENA by, we have to make those zoning changes by January 31 of the coming year, 2024. The Housing Element includes five key zoning strategies to address the city's needs in housing over the next eight years. So first, inventory sites from the last Housing Element cycle that were not developed in the previous eight years would be allowed by right development for projects that include 20% or more affordable units, and that means development could proceed on those sites without discretionary review by the Planning Commission or city council, and that is, this is actually a requirement of state law that we allow this. Second, maximum densities in the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan area would be increased, and the existing cap of 680 residential units would be removed. Density bonuses in the Affordable Housing Overlay, which we call the AHO, would be modified to work together with state density bonus law to allow developments density of up to 100 dwelling units per acre, and the sites that could use the AHO would be expanded to include all opportunity sites in the Housing Element as well as R3 sites around downtown. Commercial-only zoning districts would be modified to allow mixed-use development that incorporates residential uses, and the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement would be removed for R3 lots around downtown to achieve development at a density of up to 30 dwelling units per acre. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to share updates since the last city council study session on zoning in December of 2022 and to receive feedback from the council and the public on zoning changes necessary to implement the Housing Element programs by January of 2024, and as was stated previously, no actions will be taken this evening. So first, I'll start with an overview of the specific plan changes. In the specific plan area, the densities of eight zoning sub-districts listed here are provided, are proposed to be modified with densities of at least 30 dwelling units per acre or more, which HCD has deemed appropriate to accommodate housing for lower-income households, and that 30 dwelling units per acre is considered what's called the default density by HCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, the state. The densities shown in the columns with the gray header, so that's the second and fifth columns, are from the existing specific plan, and then the columns next to those with the reddish-orange header are from last December zoning study session at the city council, and then the columns with the teal header are a new density increase option that was created in response to comments that were received at the previous study session. The red text in a couple of these columns for the existing specific plan, those show densities less than 30 dwelling units per acre, so those do not meet HCD's requirement, and in those particular areas, we need to bump those up to at least 30 dwelling units per acre. As you can see in this chart, densities at the base level have generally been increased by 10 to 20 dwelling units per acre since the last study session in December, and bonus densities in the downtown and stationary sub-districts have been increased by 20 to 40 dwelling units per acre since the last study session.
And just a quick question, and the bonus is still discretionary, correct?
Yes, that would be a public benefit bonus option. This is a map of the existing specific plan sub-districts, and so as shown in the last slide, eight of these zoning sub-districts are proposed to be modified with a minimum permitted density of 30 dwelling units per acre or more. So you can see Santa Cruz Avenue running in between these blocks that are reddish in color, and then those are bounded by Oak Grove and Menlo Avenue, and then El Camino Real runs sort of north to south on the page here down to the border with Palo Alto. The central sub-districts that are outlined in this red color, those are the downtown, that's the downtown sub-district, and then there's a brownish color here, that's the station area east, and then the station area west is in this yellowish folded outline color, and so those sub-districts would have maximum base densities of 60 dwelling units per acre and maximum bonus densities of 100 dwelling units per acre. densities at the bonus level would permit development up to 100 dwelling units per acre downtown and in the specific, in the station area, which are sort of the core of downtown and near the Caltrain Station, and this area does include the downtown parking lots that have been discussed in the Housing Element. The maximum density, bonus densities of 100 dwelling units per acre, that was evaluated to provide parity with the bonus level densities that are currently permitted in the bayfront area of the city, and it's also near the upper end of densities that could be accommodated in what is typically called a five-over-two development. So five-over-two development typically has two stories of a podium level that can include commercial uses, retail uses, some residential amenities, as well as parking that would be needed for a building, as well as sometimes residential uses might be incorporated as well, and then the podium of two levels is topped by up to five levels of typically residential wood frame construction, and this is a pretty common building type that is seen currently throughout the Bay Area. You can also see examples of it currently going up under construction in the bayfront area of Menlo Park. So this is a familiar building type for developers and contractors to utilize. When we go to heights and densities that are above that five-over-two construction type, then the construction type tends to change to more high-rise development, which can escalate building costs and make it challenging to developers to potentially develop a large number of affordable units. So the remaining sub-districts, aside from those with the black dotted borders that you can see here at the edge of the station area east, there's two on either, one on either side. Those would have, these remaining districts outside of those two would have maximum base densities of 40 dwelling units per acre and maximum bonus densities of 50 dwelling units per acre. And then the two sub-districts with the black dotted borders are proposed to remain at their current densities and retain their current development standards, and so that would be this longer one down at the bottom of the page is the El Camino Real Southeast, and then the one above the station area east district is the El Camino Real Northeast Residential Emphasis Subdistrict. The southeast sub-district already include, allows residential densities similar to the proposed densities that were proposing for sub-districts outside of downtown in the station area, and it's also the site of the Middle Plaza project, so that has redeveloped a pretty significant portion of that sub-district already. The northeast Residential Emphasis Subdistrict has already been mostly redeveloped with the Spring Line project, and there are a few smaller lots that remain that haven't been redeveloped or renovated in recent years, but that's, that sub-district currently allows 32 to 50 dwelling units per acre as well. So it would be above the, above the densities that HCD is looking to accommodate affordable housing. This is an example of a building section for the downtown sub-district development standards in the existing specific plan area. In the next slide, I'm just going to walk through a portion of table, a table that's in Attachment A, which is the Planning Commission staff report, and believe it's Attachment B of Attachment A, so sorry for the confusion there, but I'm going to use the downtown sub-district as an example to walk through that Attachment B of Attachment A, and this graphic will help illustrate a couple of development regulations proposed to be changed before I get into that. So this example building here faces Santa Cruz Avenue, and this height that's shown as a one with an orange circle around it, that would be the maximum height of the building at 38 feet. And then the height shown as two with an orange circle is the maximum height of the building facade, so you can see the building rises to this 30-feet height before it then starts to step back from the property line. And then finally, the building profile is this nine in an orange circle, and that's illustrated by this red dotted line that curves up at a 45-degree angle and then maxes out at the 38 maximum, 38-foot maximum height shown under one. And so basically, that red dotted line is the angle at which additional floors above the, of the building above that facade height have to step back beyond the 30 feet. The FAR for the building would be the gross floor area that's contained within the building, and that would include the commercial FAR that's shown here as retail in red, and then the two yellow floors, yellowish floors above would be residential FAR, and there may also be some areas for storage, mechanical equipment, things like that, that would be necessary to make the building function. And then finally, the density is considered the concentration of residential units contained in these two floors of yellow residential uses. So with that in mind, this table shows the existing and proposed development standards for the downtown sub-district at the base level. The middle-left column here shows the existing standards. The next column over from there shows the December 22 study session proposal, and then the far-right column shows the proposed density increase standards that staff is recommending based on feedback from the last study session. The items are listed here in this table from top to bottom, but if you are looking at the Attachment B to Attachment A, that would be red left to right. So downtown is the first sub-district that's listed in the table in Attachment A, and the top half of the Attachment A, Attachment B table shows the base level standards, the bottom half of the table shows the public benefit bonus standards. This slide is just going to focus on the base standards that would be shown in the top half of that larger table to orient you to the overall layout of how to read that.
A real quick question regarding this current slide, 1220 proposed, is that what is currently in our application to HCD?
Yes, that's consistent with what we've stated in the Housing Element.
Okay, that we're still waiting for word back?
Correct.
Okay, and the proposal, the density increase option is, is what we would do irrespective of what we hear back with regards to the current application?
Right, this is an option above and beyond what we included in the Housing Element.
Okay, but it would never be communicated to the state regarding this current submittal?
Depending on what we hear back from the state on the Housing Element, we would, we would communicate, but yes, this is, we would not be updating the, if the Housing Element were certified, we would not be updating the Housing Element to show this increase option.
Okay, thanks.
So reading this first row of the table, the base residential density would increase from 25 dwelling units per acre, and we're recommending that increase up to 60 dwelling units per acre now, which is a 20 dwelling unit per acre increase from the last study session in December. The project team proposes to keep the existing base FAR of 2.0 as the maximum commercial FAR, and then set a, sorry, I'm gonna, it's blocked on my screen here with the zoom, and then we would increase the maximum total FAR to 2.75. In other words, 0.75 FAR would be added for residential uses only, and the remaining 2.0 could be used for commercial uses just as currently allowed in the specific plan, or part of that 2.0 FAR could also be used for residential uses. The key thing to keep in mind is that the ground floor must contain community-serving retail and personal services to keep that mix of, mix of different uses, commercial vibrancy specific to the downtown and station area sub-districts, and that's required in the specific plan now by the existing Main Street overlay. To encourage more residential development, units with higher bedroom counts for larger families and more for-sale units, an increase in FAR called the Step Up Base and Public Benefit Bonus FAR would be offered to developers who provide between 50 and 65% of the overall building FAR towards residential uses and a minimum of 50% of units with two or more bedrooms, and then of that 50% of units with two or more bedrooms, 10% would need to have three or more bedrooms to accommodate, again, the idea of units for larger families, not just getting a lot of small studio, one-bedroom type units in a development. So for this sub-district, the Step Up FAR bonus would be 0.4 FAR increase for a 3.15 FAR total. And then the maximum height for any building in this downtown sub-district at the base level would increase from 38 feet to 60 feet, and the maximum height of the building facade along a street or public right-of-way would increase from 30 to 40 feet. So there are different standards for the bonus level that are shown in the larger table that I'm referencing in the staff report that would allow additional FAR in height so developments could achieve, actually achieve those public benefit bonus densities of up to 100 dwelling units per acre. So this is a table, we're throwing around a lot of numbers here and a lot of discussions about heights and densities and FARs, and so just to give an idea of the, what that means in term of, in terms of a building and how many stories of development you may see, we have a table here that has the different sub-districts listed, and you can see that under this first column, second column, the existing specific plan base and bonus could get you to, so the ones that are in parentheses are at the bonus level. You could typically get up to five, between three and five stories of development. Based on the density increase option that we've been talking about, you could see development more in the range of three to seven stories of development, particularly those seven stories would be in the station areas in downtown where the greatest densities would be permitted. And then get into this just a little bit later, but to give you an idea of kind of really maxing out what could potentially be done here for a 100% affordable project that's utilizing some state laws that have come into effect recently that allow three extra stories of development within a half-mile of a transit stop, you could be seeing, especially in the station area, buildings as tall as 10 stories in height, generally between six and 10 stories, depending on the level and the sub-district, the level of development and the sub-district in which it's located. Just a few other specific plan changes. The limit of 680 residential units in the specific plan area would be removed. There would be a minimum density, minimum residential density of 20 dwelling units per acre established that would help set a basic floor for expectations of what residential development should be in the specific plan area. Minimum parking requirements may be reduced or removed, but under AB 2097, a state law that recently came into effect that generally prohibits applying minimum parking requirements within a half-mile of a transit stop. And I do have a map a little bit later in the presentation that would show you kind of what that half-mile development within a half-mile of transit stop where that could happen. So we'll move into the commercial districts that the team is proposing to make mixed-use districts. As shown in this center row that's in bold and italics, there's an existing zoning district called C2B that already allows mixed-use residential development, and it allows residential development of up to 30 dwelling units per acre, which is that number we discussed earlier that HCD requires as a minimum for affordable housing. And its basic zoning regulations for residential or mixed-use development would be as follows. So maximum building coverage would be 60%. The FAR for multiple dwelling units would increase on a sort of gradient scaling up to 0.9 for 30 dwelling units per acre, so proportionally up or down from that, that specific density. The FAR for mixed residential and commercial developments could not exceed one point O total. And the height of structures could not exceed thirty feet, except for a mixed use structure, which would be allowed a height up to forty feet. So as an example, for a site in the C two B district, you could develop up to forty percent of the FAR for commercial uses. You, a developer could get up to fifty percent, but that does require a use permit. So let's leave that aside and say forty percent FAR for commercial. So that would leave sixty percent of the FAR available for residential uses before the maximum one hundred percent FAR would be reached. Alternatively, on that same site in the C two B zoning district, a residential use of ninety percent FAR could be developed. And it could choose whether to incorporate the remaining ten percent commercial FAR available before that one hundred percent combined maximum would be reached. Under the current C two B requirements, developments can be mixed use, but they can also be all commercial or all residential. The proposal that staff has come up with is to leave that flexibility in the proposed regulations. But at the planning commission study session, which was held last week, commissioners also indicated concern about maintaining community-serving retail and personal services in the areas where these sites are located. This is a map of the commercial districts that would be combined under C two B. I apologize, it's fairly small and the colors are a little bit light. But just to walk you through that verbally, the parcels are mainly located along the Willow Road corridor. So kind of runs through the center of this map from left to right. And then there are also a few outlying areas. There's a row of parcels right next to our Burgess Park campus on Burgess. And then there's a cluster of C two parcels by, in the area of the intersection of Gilbert and Manalto. And then just a couple of other scattered sites as well. These parcels are primarily small sites adjacent to single-family residential neighborhoods and tend to have a lot of commonality in the sort of the size, location of those parcels. For the remaining commercial-only zoning districts, they would be granted additional FAR for residential uses. So the team has proposed maintaining the maximum building coverage as is for each of those districts and maintaining the existing max FAR for commercial uses as well. The FAR for multiple dwellings would increase on an even gradient up to point nine for thirty dwellings per acre, so very similar to the C two B provisions for residential. And the FAR, as with the C two B, for mixed residential and commercial developments would not exceed the one point O or one hundred percent. The height of structures originally was not proposed to be modified for each district. So I'll give you a couple of examples and then a caveat about the height. So as an example, for a site in the C one C district, which is this second row down on the table, up to twenty-five percent of the FAR could be for commercial uses. And that would leave seventy-five percent of the FAR available for residential uses before the maximum one hundred percent FAR would be reached. The project could also have up to twenty percent of the site covered by buildings with a maximum height of thirty-five feet. And so as currently envisioned, there would be flexibility so that on the same site in the C one C district, an all residential use of ninety percent FAR could be developed and choose whether to incorporate that remaining ten percent of commercial FAR before the one hundred percent combined maximum would be reached. But again, at the planning commission, commissioners were recommending that we look into some of those neighborhood-serving retail and commercial uses and preservation ways to help preserve those. And then going back to the heights, at the planning commission study session, commissioners recommended increasing the maximum height for the only C two zoned area of the city that would remain, which would be the Sharon Heights Shopping Center. And staff does agree that that was an oversight, given that thirty feet is the lowest level here. The commissioners didn't indicate a specific height. But certainly, we're open to exploring increases to make this development FAR feasible for that particular site. This is a map of those three remaining commercial districts, so C one, C one C, and then the remaining C two parcels. So this is Sand Hill Road that runs kind of left to right before it reaches El Camino Real. And then you can see a number of these sites are fairly large, located along Sand Hill Road. These are C one C parcels, Sharon Heights Shopping Center in the pink color. And then there's a cluster at, around Middlefield and Willow that are sort of in this bluish color here. Again, these are larger sites than what we saw for the districts to be combined under C two B, have a little bit different topology and different, different characteristics about them. So I'm going to move into the affordable housing overlay. Staff is still evaluating affordability levels and affordable unit percentages for development to be able to use the HO, but it would build off of the state density bonus law. And so it is designed, the HO is designed to encourage development of affordable units for low, very low and extremely low income households. It would be expanded to include all of the sixth cycle arena housing opportunity sites as well as the R three around downtown sites. In addition to the specific plan area where it currently is able to be used. And it would be modified to work in combination with the state density bonus law on a site to achieve densities of up to one hundred dwelling units per acre. So this is table four of the planning commission staff report, attachment A. And this is an example of a one hundred percent affordable housing development at thirty dwelling units per acre, seeking an eighty percent density bonus and an eighty-six percent AHO bonus. So you could think of some of those commercial sites that we just looked at, either those to be combined under C two B or the remaining commercial districts that would be changed. Those all would, are proposed to have up to thirty dwelling units per acre of density. So if you follow through the table, an example project on one acre. And if they propose the maximum number of units, thirty has all affordable units, they could receive twenty-six AHO bonus units that would also need to be developed as affordable units to qualify for the eighty percent state density bonus. And then after applying the eighty percent state density bonus, the project could receive another forty-five units, which would also be affordable. And that would have the effect of creating a development with one hundred and one affordable units. For mixed affordability projects, state density bonus law allows up to a fifty percent density bonus. And on this slide, the planning commission recommended increasing the AHO density bonus so that projects could achieve not one hundred dwellings per acre, but they wanted it bumped to one hundred and fifty dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with feedback from some affordable housing developers in the past, which indicated one hundred fifty dwellings per acre was the desired density to achieve the kind of development that would, that would scale out. And so as you can see, this is attachment E of the staff report. This is an example of a one hundred percent affordable housing development at thirty dwelling units per acre, seeking an eighty percent state density bonus. And then the AHO density bonus would be bumped up to one hundred and seventy-five percent, which would allow a total density of one hundred fifty dwelling units per acre, consistent with the planning commission's thoughts on this. So a few other zoning ordinance changes and things to keep in mind. AB seventeen sixty-three would allow projects that are one hundred percent affordable and located within one half mile of a major transit stop to have unlimited density and a height increase of up to three stories or thirty-three feet. The Menlo Park and Palo Alto Caltrain stations are considered major transit stops. So future projects in Menlo Park that are located near those transit stations that meet the necessary criteria could utilize AB seventeen sixty-three provisions and exceed the proposed maximum density and height for an applicable site. So I'm going to skip ahead here and show you that map that I was referring to earlier. You can see this, everything in blue here is sort of within that half mile radius, but outside of Menlo Park. And then the darker gray shaded parcels are specific plan area. The Caltrain Station is here in green, Menlo Park Caltrain Station. Palo Alto Caltrain Station is in pink. And then all of the parcels that fall within the half mile radius that are within the city of Menlo Park are in the light gray. So this provision would allow a project to exceed the density bonuses that are proposed in the updated AHO and in combination with state density bonus law. In addition, all R three properties allowed around downtown would be permitted a density of up to thirty dwelling units per acre. And all other R three properties over two acres would be allowed twenty dwelling units per acre of density. And child daycare homes would be allowed by right within residential areas. This map is showing the R three parcels around downtown. Those are shown in the darker gray shading here. The lighter gray indicates the specific plan area. And these are the parcels that would get up to thirty dwelling units per acre of density. So next steps for the zoning process. Staff will use feedback from this study session and planning commission study session to further develop proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance and specific plan. And detailed ordinances will be drafted for review this fall, early winter of this year. And then all actions necessary to amend the general plan, zoning ordinance and specific plan would need to be adopted by January twenty twenty-four, as I stated earlier in the presentation. Then I will just leave up on the screen here, key areas for feedback that we're hoping to get from the city council. So running through these, these major strategies, again, increasing densities in the El Camino Real downtown specific plan area, removing that residential cap of six hundred eighty units, increasing density bonuses in the affordable housing overlay for one hundred percent affordable developments and expanding the sites that could utilize the AHO, rezoning commercial sites to allow mixed use development, removing the ten thousand square foot minimum lot size to achieve thirty dwellings per acre on R three lots around downtown, and allowing all other R three properties over two acres, up to twenty dwelling units per acre of density, and allowing child daycare homes by right in residential districts. With that, I will return it back to you, Mayor Wilson. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much, Mr. Smith, and to all of our staff for the tremendous amount of work that has been done, not only to arrive at this moment with these staff reports, but over the past two years to get us here. So for members of the public that are tuning in, we're kind of at the tail end of a multi-year process to update our housing element. We've already submitted our housing element to the state. We're awaiting our second response back. And in that submission, our various commitments that we've made to do by certain dates, programs and policies, and updating our zoning and some of the work that we're going to be talking about tonight are included in those commitments that are due by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So some of these things we have discretion on, some of these were more or less locked into if we want to be compliant with the state. And with that, again, thank you. I also want to thank the planning commission, who reviewed this material a week ago for their thoughtful insight as well. So before we get to council discussion, we absolutely want to hear from members of the public. It's nice to see folks here tonight and watching on Zoom. And we, we know that this is a highly complex topic. And for those engaging in it, thank you, because it's not an easy task. So City Clerk Karen, can you please at this time call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilson. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our special business study session items, C one, review and provide feedback on potential zoning ordinance, specific plan, and conforming general plan amendments associated with the adopted twenty twenty-three thirty-one housing element. If you are participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk.
Right, and our first speaker will be Julian Hansen, followed by Joseph Grassick. Let me take a quick peek.
Hello, my name is Julianne and I'm an eighth grader at Hillview Middle School.
Hold it really close to your mouth.
Okay, I'm an eighth grader at Hillview Middle School. And my name is Julianne, and I'm here to speak for more affordable housing. In elementary school, I had a fifth grade teacher. And she, she was talking to us about how her house is a little smaller than ours and that she has two kids. And it just, it made me sad that the people in our community who do so much for the next generation, which is my generation, get less than people who don't contribute as much. And I don't know much about this issue, but I just wanted to say that I, I believe that, that like teachers should get affordable housing and people that are low income should also get affordable housing. And that if we just let people that are more wealthy come into Menlo Park, then there will be no diversity. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. So our next speaker will be Joseph Grassick, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Hi, my name's Joe Grass. I'm also Julianne's dad. And I've lived in the same house in Menlo Park in Felton Gables for about twenty-eight years now. And three kids, two are in college and Julianne's in eighth grade at Hillview. And I've watched Menlo Park change a lot over those twenty-eight years plus. And it, I mean, Menlo Park is still a great place. But again, just affording to live here is the real problem, as my daughter mentioned. And I just want to add my, my voice, along with my daughter and everybody else, for affordable housing, and just remind people why. And I think my daughter said it the best, is that teachers, working people can't afford to live here and our communities become, over the, the And our communities become, over the time I've been here almost thirty years, just really very stratified and not as good a place to live. It's not a community that, the direction it's going in, it's just not as diverse a community as it could be, and we have a real chance to change that. And I want to commend the council and the staff on just a great process and a great presentation. And I just want to add my voice to everybody else that just, you know, we want to make this a diverse place to live, not just racially diverse, but economically diverse, diverse in ideas. And you know, housing is a real crisis for people that can't afford to live here, people that are here, like myself, I've been in the same place for thirty years. You don't notice, but the one thing you do notice here is just the stress that everyone goes through in town. If you just, ordinary working people are just really stressed out and we have a chance to, to fix it. And the last thing is, I'd like my kids to be able to afford to live here later on and, you know, not have to have my family pick up roots and go someplace else. So I think it'd be great if we can just fix this. Not only for just working people, but families that are here, so you don't have to uproot and leave and just make it a more normal, diverse community like it was when I moved here almost thirty years ago. So that's all I have to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Jenny Michelle, followed by Olivia Grimes.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff, Neighbors. My name is Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Block. I'm a mom of a deaf and hard-of-hearing son. I'm a longtime Renting resident, a City Clerk Judy Fan Club member, and these are my personal comments. Three items to bring up after I submitted written comments like last night. But right now, this calls for a little bit of funk. Oh, it's too loud. When you think of me, sorry, when you think of somebody who is housing unstable, born and bred right here in Palo Alto and Menlo Park, think of me. I'm your poster child for housing instability. Take a good look. That's me. Yeah. To boot, our disabled son already embraces his instability in ten years if he wants to live around here. Two, the zoning conversation should have an entire chapter dedicated to climate resilient buildings to withstand one hundred and thirty-four degree heat such as in Iowa today or a hurrah quake or a fire NATO, fire tornado. And that needs to happen like yesterday, seriously. Three, Representative Spear came out to end child poverty. Yes, that's awesome. Great. But seriously, on brand, I've got bad news. You want to know? We've got the biggest driver of child poverty here is also what's missing in our housing element. Zoning in our R one districts. We must eliminate our policies that build walls. Note Matthew Desmond. And I'm working to the grave. You too? In closing, I'm certain that we have our element that we have our element determined as compliant if we extend the El Camino downtown zoning changes to the other districts, transit districts such as San Hill, Alameda, Valparaiso, Willow and Middlefield. Otherwise, I welcome more builders remedy projects in my backyard and support the applicants. Welcome Pied Piper. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So next up will be Olivia Grimes, followed by Jackie Sebrian.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
Awesome. So thank you, Honorable Mayor, the entire council, Menlo Park city staff. My name is Olivia Grimes. I'm a policy intern at the Housing Leadership Council, Sammentown County. Our mission is to work with communities to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. I'm here to support the direction of Menlo Park's housing element. The proposed increases to base densities and affordable housing overlay are important steps the city can take to promote new homes and make these zones. Nonetheless, HLC worries that the proposed densities may still need to be higher to comply with state law. We agree with the planning commission that the affordable housing overlay should at least be a hundred fifty dwelling units per acre, ideally more. However, that's just a start. To create a compliant housing element, Menlo Park will also need to promote more mixed use, more mixed income market raised housing. Promoting sufficient development may require an increase to the base densities allowed. HLC continues to support increasing base densities to at least a hundred dwelling units per acre. We understand that Menlo Park is trying to stay within the constraints of your current E I R, which should not study rezoning beyond the current staff proposals. Recognizing this constraint, the city has imposed on itself, HLC would like to further support modifications to the affordable housing overlay to make it easier to use mixed income market rate developers. Thank you for your consideration and for your leadership in housing. Just as a quick summary of our positions here, we'd like to see the city increase the affordable housing ordinance density to a hundred fifty dwelling units per acre to increase base density zoning above the currently proposed. And affordable housing developers and market rate developers are affordable housing developed. Sorry, are unlikely to buy property and on the market in Menlo Park. So increasing densities won't crowd them out, just facilitate new homes. And in order to effectively plan for housing and create a legally compliant housing element, Menlo Park needs to promote both a hundred percent affordable housing and mixed income market rate housing. These things can't come at the expense of each other. To get a certified housing element, the city needs to promote mixed income market rate housing. Affordable housing alone simply cannot produce enough low-income homes. Affordable housing developers and market rate developers are competing for different land. Affordable housing developers need publicly owned sites that can't afford the cost of market rate land. Market rate developers need higher densities, on the other hand. And let's not forget that housing is a community benefit at the end of the day. So thank you, everyone, and I hope that Menlo Park considers these modifications to the housing element.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Jackie Sebrian, followed by Brian Kissel. Jackie, if you can use the handheld, appreciate it.
Hi, City Council and everybody else. Thank you so much. For, first off, like, I want to thank all the people who've put hours and hours into this project. I am a recipient of a BMR house. It is why, as a teacher in this district, I've been able to stay in Menlo Park. I've been in my district for over twenty years. I am civically engaged, as most of you know, because I'm everywhere. And so like, I am the reason that we need more affordable housing. And I'm here because we planned for people who didn't live here yet. So I'm totally supportive of all the affordable housing. Our school district demographer has told us that we can expect fewer kindergarteners with younger siblings in the future because young families can't afford to live here until their kids are older. And so we need to plan for housing that families can live in. We need fam, we need the distances that our public and service sector workers commute are terrible for the planet and terrible for our communities. And so I encourage you to do what you can to make space for our families to stay here for a long time.
Thank you for your comment. So next is Brian Kissel, followed by G Joy Kobayashi.
Hi, this is Brian Kissel. I'm a district by resident in Sharon Heights and I'm calling to give my support. Well, first of all, I want to thank M Group, City Council, Planning Commission for all their work on the housing element and the corresponding zoning adjustments to ensure that our housing element gets approved so that we can manage the builders remedy projects that I don't think anyone wants to have happen in an uncontrolled fashion. To that end, speaking specifically on behalf of a homeowner in the Sharon Heights area, I do support the recommended height increase from thirty feet to sixty feet for Sharon Heights Shopping Center for mixed income housing, which will also provide access to services you know, for, for development here in Sharon Heights, which is important. I hope in addition to that, however, that as we proceed with development and the housing element, we can work with property owners and retailers to explore additional development beyond just the parking lot area that's designated in the housing element. The Sharon Heights Shopping Center, for those who are familiar with it, is, while it's convenient and it's nice that we have the services that we have, it is predated and it is low density. And if we look up and down the peninsula at other communities that have done upgrades to shopping zones, I think we all see that that really revitalizes communities. So in addition to increasing the height allocation or the zoning heights to sixty feet to allow higher density, I hope we also look at opportunities to improve the shopping center itself to increase density there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So next up is G Joy Kosobayashi, followed by Patty F. And this will be the final call for public comment on our special business item study session C one.
I'm a thirty-four-year resident of the Sharon Heights area. I know that everybody agrees that housing is a problem and I appreciate the recommendations of that have been presented tonight. I don't pretend to be an expert, but these seem reasonable to me. And I know that we're going to have to make some adjustments and changes going forward.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Patty Frye, followed by Brittany Baxter.
Hi, this is Patty Frye, a longtime Menlo Park resident and former planning commissioner. I, I think it's important as we look at changes to consider why, for example, in a specific plan area, more housing wasn't built in, in recent times. The Middle Plaza and the Spring Line projects are really good examples that there are other factors at foot besides just the density and the height. Those two projects could have built at the, at the F A R that they chose. One was at the maximum base and the other one was at the maximum bonus level of, of size. They could have built two hundred and sixty more units if the Middle Plaza had maxed out to what was allowed now. They, between the two, they could have built four hundred and twenty-eight more units. So there are other factors involved that really need to be addressed, one of which is that the amount of office that's allowed is based on, you know, old business practices. The business practices now will cram a lot more workers into the same space. Further, there has been no tie between the amount of housing produced and the amount of non-residential allowed, particularly office. If you increase the, the total size of projects, the office will go up commensurately if somebody wants to maximize it because it's based on the percentage of the project, not based on any other metric. So it really needs to be addressed. The other thing I would like to speak to, and I put a lot of this in a letter that I sent today, email sent, is just thinking about the quality of life for both current residents, but also future residents of our city. If we take away the, everything on the parking lots and we have no ability to require new parking, where are people going to park when they come to patronize our businesses? If there are no requirements or incentives to include community serving uses like, like restaurants and retail and, you know, repair shops and so on. You know, we're all going to have to go to another town to do that and that will really affect, you know, the quality of life, the city coffers and the environmental impacts that, that need to be addressed. So I urge you to not just look at the housing part of this, but what makes these changes be part of a higher quality of life for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Brittany Baxter, followed by Ophelia.
Hi, this is Brittany Baxter, D three resident. First, thank you so much to council commissioners, staff and consultants for all the work that has gone into this project over the last few years. I wanted to voice support for a few of the policies that were mentioned in the staff report. I can tell that a lot of thoughtfulness and care went into crafting some really specific targeted approaches there. So in the report, I saw some policies to encourage much-needed affordable homes specifically through the use of density bonuses. And I'm in full support of that since that'll give the affordable housing developers in particular, the ability to go up to the one hundred fifty units per acre, that they need to make these developments possible. Basically, when you can spread out land and development costs across more units, affordability becomes easier to reach. It also feels like we don't often see parcels turn over here in town. So the density bonuses help ensure that when these parcels do turn over, we get the most affordable housing possible out of them. And that's great to help with our housing crisis and it's also great for our renal goals. And I know there are some commercial zones where those height limits need to be increased to make that mixed using housables or mixed use housing possible. So I support those recommendations as well. And I also noticed policies that encourage the creation of units sized for families and units for those looking to purchase. And I really love those policies, you know, like a few earlier commenters mentioned, that's a huge need here in town, especially because the housing market becomes much more expensive every single year. I checked on some quick stats that I just wanted to share. So right now in Menlo Park, Redfin says that our median single-family home price is three point four six million dollars. So at the current seven percent interest rates, which we know are right in line with the historical averages, and with an eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollar down payment, which represents the twenty-five percent down that you need if you're borrowing more than two point five million dollars, that median home price, again, of three point four six million dollars means that your monthly payment just for principal and interest alone comes in over seventeen thousand dollars per month. So then by the time you add in insurance and property taxes and parcel taxes, you're a little bit over twenty K per month, again, just for housing costs. And that doesn't include childcare, car payments, utilities, food, everything else that a household also needs to consider. Nerd Wallet has a great affordability calculator. So they say that in order to afford this median price home in Menlo Park, your household will need to bring in eight hundred seventy-six thousand per year. That's seventy-three thousand per month, again, just to pay for the principal and interest and taxes on that home. So when the prices look like that, naturally, most families here are not going to be buying single-family homes in the same way that they might have in the past. And so having these larger-sized rentals and condos is more crucial than ever to help keep our workforce and community members in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Ophelia, followed by Lynn Bramlett.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name's Ophelia Bayo, longtime advocate for housing, specifically affordable housing and equitable land use throughout the Bay Area, but specifically within our local region, East Palo Alto and the larger Sammentown County. I want to first start off by expressing gratitude for the thoroughness and I think a very thoughtful report, like others have mentioned, that staff put together the work that council, the planning commission have all put toward the really great proposal that I think we're seeing tonight. And to keep it fairly brief, I just want to express my resounding support for seeing the increased density throughout the west side of Menlo Park, seeing how that housing could be spread out and really help the regional, not only the local sort of housing market within our immediate community, but really the regional housing market as all cities hopefully take after what Menlo Park is doing now and also do what I, I mean, I think I want to call their fair share of building more housing, denser housing and helping ameliorate the issue or beginning to ameliorate the issue of obscene housing prices and just housing inaccessibility. So I think those are the main comments that I wanted to make for tonight. And again, thank you all for all the work you've put into this and the many amazing public comments that I've been hearing from the community as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Lynn Bramlett, followed by Karen Grove.
Good evening, council and staff and the public. This is Lynn Bramlett and I'm speaking for myself, though I wear many hats. I too want to thank the staff, council and the public who have been following this topic. I agree, in general, more affordable housing is needed. You're hearing a train come by as I live near a quiet You're hearing a train come by as I live near a quiet zone. Um, I personally value diversity and don't wanna live in a, a wealthy enclave where people can't afford to live here. Um, however, I agree with Patty Frye, this is a complex issue, and I wanna introduce a few other aspects that I think are important to look at as part of a holistic solution. And one would be to continue the effort for the quiet zones. If we're going to concentrate housing along a, basically a train corridor, it's more important than ever that that work continue, and I believe grant money is available. And I would certainly be get, be willing to donate my time to help. I also think we need to review our open space element. Because, um, I'm not, I, I think that warrants a closer look to be sure we are going to have even there, even if they're pocket parks, but just places where people can gather and just see some greenery, uh, you know, and get out. So New York City is very dense. I'm not suggesting what this plan is anywhere close to that, but those, their public parks, Central Park and other parks ma- make it work for them, if you will. And then finally, I would like a way to be sure that these new units aren't owned by foreign or absentee owners. Can, you know, to me, there's I'm concerned about the number of units that I think are basically investment purchases. I, I encountered this while I was working for the US Census in the twenty-twenty count. Um, is, is there a way we could do something about that to be sure when we build housing that it actually is available for prospective homeowners or renters who actually live in Menlo Park in our part of the neighborhood? And then my closing comment is Sharon Heights, so I'm glad the planning commission looked, looked at it. Okay, and I, I don't think it's that far away, so thank you. I, I think my time is up.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Okay, our next speaker will be Karen Grove, followed by Adina Levin.
Good evening. Um, I also want to express gratitude for the incredible amount of work um, and the clarity and the organ, you know, the, everything that's gone into getting us to where we are today. Um, and I'm hoping that we can like hit it, I don't know, over the finish line and, and, and bring it home. So to that end, um, I wanna encourage increasing the density that we can achieve with the affordable housing, uh, overlay. Um, I like that because it, I, it would then allow that density, which can be very low profile, not imposing on a small lot, but it would apply for a hundred percent affordable, well, on a scale, but it would apply, um, throughout the city. Um, recognizing that the Flood School site is not going to be subject or benefit from the affordable housing overlay. Um, but everywhere else, um, this side of one oh one would be, and I think that's really important. Um, I think the downtown density should be as generous, heights and density and all of the things should be as generous um, for producing homes as we have been in the Bayfront. Or more so because there are better accesses, there is better access to services, transit, et cetera. And finally, I live in Sharon Heights. Um, I use the Sharon Heights Shopping Center. I wanna echo everything that Brian Kissel said about um, someday, hopefully redeveloping that shopping center to be amazing. Um, and absolutely including some affordable housing, and to that end, I strongly support increasing the height limit, um, for the carve-out on the Sharon Heights Shopping Center parking lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And next up is Adina Levin.
Aha, got it. Got the unmute. Uh, thank you very much, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, coming home from San Francisco, and I only got as far as the Middle Plaza from the Palo Alto Caltrain. Um, wanted to, uh, uh, thank, uh, the staff and consultants for a set of refinements to help our housing element achieve the goals of, um, enabling homes for people of all income levels to, uh, live uh, in Menlo Park, um, you know, along the lines of a number of the comments that have been, uh, made here today. Um, and, um, uh, in, uh, to, to that end, um, wanted to support the comments about, um, increasing the density, um, uh, for the affordable housing overlay and increasing the density also that applies to the, uh, mixed-use, uh, uh, developments on currently commercial sites. Um, as the HLC comment said, there's, um, you know, really the two different strategies, um, for generating the affordable housing. The a hundred percent affordable that will be on, mostly on publicly, largely on publicly-owned land and also some donated land. And that needs the density of a hundred and fifty units per acre that we're hearing from the affordable housing developers. Um, and then, um, there's also the, the density that would be needed in order to enable, uh, commercial properties to change. Um, we're at a really unique point in history with a lot of change in work patterns and retail patterns where we do have some, um, potential of the change that would help generate more housing. Um, but the, um, uh, zoning needs to be there so that that, uh, will change. And, um, so I think one of the questions was raised, like, you know, what exactly do we need to have HCD, you know, approve our housing element? And that may or may not be the same. We may need, uh, more in order to actually have the housing built. Um, and if we're not keeping up, uh, you know, uh, you know, keeping up with the housing is making our community, uh, you know, be more diverse, be more inclusive. Um, people, different incomes, um, you know, young people to live here. And, um, also, uh, you know, on the negative side, um, we're gonna have a mid-cycle review, and if the state policies, uh, continue, um, if we are not keeping up actually with having the housing be built, um, we're going to, you know, lose more control and have more streamlining that, you know, uh, people may or may not like the outcomes of. So in order to be able to have that control, we should not only, um, you know, com- comply with the minimum, but make sure that we get the housing. Uh, lastly, um, you know, sitting in one of the El Camino places, I think that there was some recommendation that there are some sites that don't need the increased zoning because they're near other parcels that have been developed. It doesn't make any sense to me. El Camino, um, should be, uh, uh, consistent, um, with places that are, uh, you know, near transit and near services. Um, uh, thanks again, um, and, uh, hopefully we will have not only a compliant city, uh, housing element, but one that will help us, uh, you know, have the housing that we need in our community and the neighbors we need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I am seeing no further hands or cards. So Mayor Wilson, oh, apologies. Yes. Go right ahead, Joan.
Hello. My name is Joan Skornick. Uh, I live on Hermosa Way, and we've lived there for about seventeen years, but we lived in South Palo Alto for eight years before that. My, I have one question. I keep hearing a rumor that the plot that, uh, Sunset Magazine was on will somehow or another be able to uh, circumvent height restrictions and put up a massive twenty-one-story building? Is there anything to this rumor? That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no hands or further cards. Mayor Wilson, you may continue.
Uh, thank you, City Clerk Karen. Um, so I was thinking, um, we would take a quick five-minute break, um, before we move the conversation up to the dais, but prior to doing so, I wanted to ask staff if they could address the final, uh, public comment that we received, um, this evening about the Sunset Magazine parcel and, and the, the rumor. If there's anything you would like to discuss.
So thank you for the question. We have frequently asked questions on our Housing Element website. It's MenloPark.gov slash Housing Element. If you scroll to the bottom of the page, there are about four questions so far about Builders Remedy. And, um, there is information on the, the one-site eighty Willow Road. We'll add more information to that website as it becomes available, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sulte. So just to repeat, to find that information, go to MenloPark.gov slash Housing Element. Then you scroll down, there's frequently asked questions. It becomes a dropdown menu. And then you'll see there's questions there about the Sunset Magazine and, um, the, the state law, uh, that is is being referenced with that eighty Willow Road project is called the Builders Remedy. So if you see something called the Builders Remedy, that's the topic that you would be interested in learning about. Thank you for the question. Um, okay, so, um, with that, I know there were, um, possibly some other questions that were asked, but um, I'm gonna allow a five-minute break right now so that the council can, um, freshen up a little bit before we get into our discussion. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening.
All right, having our city council back on our virtual and in-person dais. Mayor Wilson, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and I just wanna thank everyone once again for your thoughtful comments. I also want to acknowledge that we received um, some emails, uh, about this topic, and, um, I think to our, the best of our abilities, sometimes if they come in right when the meeting starts, it can be challenging to read them. Um, but we do appreciate, um, the feedback that we've received. So at this point, I just wanna remind everybody that this is a study session. Um, the topic that we're discussing tonight, uh, the goal is to provide our staff direction that they can then use to build our updated zoning ordinances. So tonight is an important night because, um, we're letting staff know what we want them to develop, and when that comes back to us, we will be closer to that January twenty-twenty-four deadline. Um, but there will be, um, an official vote, um, not tonight, but in the future. So, um, with that framing, um, the public comment part of this evening is, is done, and now it's the conversation is moving up to the dais among council members. So, um, at this time, if anyone has questions, or if anyone is, um, rearing to share their thoughts, um, we'll just go ahead and kick it off, and I'm seeing Councilmember Door eager to go, so please.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, I have a few questions I'd love to clarify for myself as well as members of the public. Um, several people asked about the Affordable Housing Overlay, the AHO that was referenced in the, the presentation. And could you help clarify, um, there is a Assembly Bill AB seventeen sixty-three which seems to affect the areas that folks were saying they'd like to see an increase from one hundred units per acre to a hundred and fifty units per acre? And, um, could you please explain a little bit about And could you please explain a little bit about the AB 1763 and what that means for the areas that we are currently recommending or the city is recommending we could do 100 units per acre? Thank you.
Sure, so under AB 1763, projects that are within a half-mile of a transit stop. And so there was a map in the presentation showing the Menlo Park Caltrans Station, the Palo Alto Caltrans Station. Any projects that fall within a half-mile radius of those transit stops would be allowed unlimited density and up to three stories or 33 feet of additional height increase. And so for those particular projects that would invoke that law, they would be granted those unlimited densities and additional height.
Thank you. So all the areas that are currently 100 or proposed 100 units an acre are actually unlimited if they're 100% affordable. But if they're not 100% affordable, they would just be 100 units an acre?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Another question about the same area. So I'm looking at Slide 7, which is the specific plan residential densities. And it looks at all the different sub-districts. And I'm curious if you could explain a little about the differences between these sub-districts. So downtown is 100, but then downtown adjacent or along El Camino is 50, but then the station area is 100. Could you explain the reasoning that went into those differences? Because they seem bigger than saying 100 versus 80. It's 100 versus 50, and I'd like to know more.
Thank you. This is Deanna Chow, Assistant Community Development Director. And Councilmember Dor, before we can jump into that question, if I can just add on to the previous AHO conversation, I just wanted to make an additional clarification. So I know you were specifically referencing AB 1763, which Mr. Smith mentioned that for sites within a half-mile of a transit stop, there is the unlimited density bonus for those particular sites. I also wanted to bring to the council's attention. It's a newer bill that came into effect, I believe, in 2023, which also provides that unlimited density for certain areas which are in low VMT areas. And so I believe it's 15% below the general average for the area. And let me just pull up the specific planning commission reference, and we can get that Assembly Bill over to you.
I will hold on to other questions. Thank you.
I may be the only one that doesn't know, but can someone explain to me what unlimited density is exactly?
Yes, thank you. So I believe the reference that, just to close the loop on the previous comment, that so it was AB 2334. And then for the unlimited density bonus, so that is in respect to the density bonus. So in exchange for a certain percentage of affordable housing, and in this particular case, it would be 100% affordable, then the project could increase their density by unspecified amount. There are some other potential limiting factors, though, as Mr. Smith mentioned. There is that 30 feet, my number's 33 feet or three stories, which could potentially limit some of the density. But the density bonus could be increased by 50% or 100%. It just matters about how it fits in with the other development parameters for the site.
Could I follow up, please, on AB 2334? You mentioned something about low VMT and 15%. What does AB 2334 mean?
So more specifically, it's an area that generates vehicle miles traveled or VMT per capita that is below 85% of regional VMT. So I think we can pull up a map. If you give us a minute, we can share those areas with you.
And could you also please clarify what happens in those areas? What the bonus is?
Yes, so in those areas of the low VMT, it has a similar effect as AB 1763. So there would be eliminate restrictions on density and allow a height increase of up to three stories or 33 feet.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? I believe I have the map showing the areas from the EIR attaches. I don't know, I have it in my hand, something that says low VMT. It looks pretty similar to the area within half-mile of transit. Is there much difference before we start hurting our brains? Is it pretty similar to the map of the within-half-mile of transit?
Generally, yes. So Mr. Smith has a map online. So this is accessible also on the city's webpage in our TIA guidelines. And so the areas that are noted in green are the low VMT areas. And so you do see some of those areas are overlapping with the half-mile of a major transit stop. So primarily in that area around El Camino Real in the downtown is shown by the cursor. But there are a few other areas shown in green. Moving towards District 5 in Sharon Heights, there are some small portions in that area as well. And then moving towards the VA site and then further down towards the, in the Bay Haven neighborhood.
I'm seeing, Vice Mayor Taylor, do you have an add-on question to Councilmember Dor's questions?
Yes, more follow-up question.
Please.
And that is, are there any examples of projects that have unlimited density with limiting factors?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Is that question specific to Menlo Park?
Well, I know that we don't have any in Menlo Park, but are there any in cities similar to our size?
We are not aware of any. I'm looking at some of our colleagues here, and we are not aware of any yet.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the first time we're seeing this map. Is that, I'm a little surprised because we've seen reference to it, but I don't remember seeing this map. And so again, it's just the green, it's not the 0 to 15. And then those areas are basically treated like 1763 in terms of what an applicant can do on those sites?
I don't think there's a direct overlap between the two. But the low VMT areas. See if I can pull that back up again. There are some similarities, especially around the downtown El Camino Real area.
So building off Councilmember Dor's comments, if a project is in this low VMT area or within a half-mile of transit, the developer could use our local AHO, they could use the state density bonus law, or they could use these two other laws having to do with low VMT and half-mile transit to exceed the AHO and the state density bonus law in order to get unlimited units per acre, but that caps at certain heights. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that's generally correct.
And can you remind us again which colors on this map? Because it says less than the VMT threshold, and then one says 0 to 15%, but...
Yeah, essentially, the low VMT areas would be the areas in green. And then those at yellow, in the yellow or red colors would be above, outside of the low VMT areas.
So those wouldn't qualify for that state law?
Right.
Okay, just the green, but that's, okay. That's new information.
And that is with 100% affordable housing that this kicks in?
Yes, AB 2334, yes.
Okay, so I believe Councilmember Dor was asking questions that we all got really excited about. So I'm going to turn back to you so you can continue your questions.
That was the final question there. I'd welcome either council members to ask questions as well.
Okay, I certainly have questions. Do others have questions at this point? Okay. I have a question regarding the minimum density. So in the downtown specific plan area, we are, the recommendation is to apply a 20-unit-an-acre minimum to avoid getting kind of just a few large units and instead get more units. Would that minimum, because we're also looking to add residential and potentially more multifamily residential and larger things in commercial and maybe R3, would it be appropriate to apply or possible to apply that 20 minimum to those sites as well?
So is the question to apply additional minimum density requirement to the R3 around downtown and then the other commercial sites throughout the city?
Yeah, I believe, so I guess the question would be opportunity sites versus all the commercial sites? Because I believe there's about 70 commercial sites that fit our four zoning districts that we're looking at, and 17 of those are opportunity sites, if I did my math right. So I guess, is it possible to apply that to either just the opportunity sites or even all of those zoning districts?
I think we could apply that minimum requirement throughout. It would be balancing sort of the trade-offs of additional requirements that developers would have to comply with. And maybe if that discourages certain kinds of development, density is less than that, but we could apply it.
Okay, thanks. Kind of similar vein, the step-up FARs. Would it be possible to apply those also at the commercials and the R3s to expand that beyond the downtown specific plan? Or I guess other incentives in those areas?
I think we would need to confirm that. I don't have a definite answer for you. I think we studied a certain density for these parcels outside of the downtown area, well, throughout the city, at a certain level. So if the densities were to be maintained, potentially, we could increase the FAR with a step-up bonus. But I don't, I can't 100% confirm that now.
Okay, that's fine. And can you confirm that increasing the Affordable Housing Overlay per the Planning Commission's recommendation of going from 100 to 150 units an acre to our downtown area, which we've already established, but you might not really need to use, all of our opportunity sites, the commercial, the R3, that that's possible to do and still make our January 24 deadline?
So we checked in with our environmental consultant, ESA, about that possibility. And it was indicated that they believe that that could be part of an EIR identum, which could be done prior to the January 2024 deadline. So yes, it could be increased to 150 dwelling units per acre.
Okay, that's great to hear. The, I'm confused about, even though I was asking to expand the step-up FAR, I'm actually confused about it on a few levels. So I'm especially confused about the large unit direct or recommendations. So I understand that our Housing Element, which, to recap for the public, has already been submitted to the state and has some commitments that we have, includes Program H3L, which talks about incentivizing larger units for family. And as we heard Ms. Sebrion talk about the need for large family units, my understanding with H3L is that it's specific to affordable family units. And it looks like the step-up FAR, since right now it's only in the downtown specific plan, is kind of unnecessary for affordable housing because someone could just use AB 1763 to get that unlimited density. So I'm a little confused. I'm concerned if we're going to be generating a lot of large market rate units that, I guess I'm moving over to thoughts. But I guess I'm trying to understand, can you explain more about what's going on with the step-up FAR and what we're trying to accomplish?
Sure. The idea behind the step-up FAR is to really encourage, as you mentioned, the development. We're trying to avoid projects that would have a lot of small units, studio, one-bedroom only, and making sure that we're planning for larger families, groups of individuals that want to have a shared larger residence. And so there were a few criteria that are kind of included in that step-up FAR. So to get that increased space within the building that you can utilize, the idea would be that they have to provide a certain percentage of the building towards residential uses, so between 50 and 65%. And then they have to provide an average net residential unit size of 1,000 square feet. 1,000 square feet size is generally what you need to, like, that's kind of the smallest, around the smallest size that you can get, like a two-, three-bedroom unit comfortably, fairly small bedrooms. So the idea there was not to require 1,000 square feet per unit, but it needs to average out to that. So you may have some larger, you may have some smaller. It encourages sort of more of a mix of unit types in the building rather than very small studios or one-bedrooms. And then of that, of the units in the building, 50% would need to have two or more bedrooms. And then 10% of those would need to be three or more bedrooms. Or, the way that it's set up now, you could provide all-for-sale units as part of the project. And that's, so it's looking at incentivizing production of units for families or for-sale units and not just getting rental-only developments in the community.
But isn't that for just market rate, not for affordable?
So the way that it's designed now, it would be applicable to market rate development. But keeping in mind that some of these market rate developments will have inclusionary requirements as well. And so it would also apply to the BMR units that would be produced.
Okay, that last part was helpful, thank you. Would it be possible to, so we've heard a lot about communities serving retail. And I know folks think it's, whether it's in the commercial areas or even along El Camino Real, is it possible, at least along El Camino Real, or at least in the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan sub-districts that are on El Camino Real, to have some kind of first-floor retail overlay? Like we have downtown and exempt residential developments from that to encourage a vibrant Grand Boulevard?
So we've heard feedback on that. And I think that was evidenced tonight through some of the speakers and some of the letters that have been received. I would say we hadn't envisioned that as part of this project. We were focused on really adding on a new layer of residential uses to different districts throughout the community in order to comply with the Housing Element requirements. That said, there is the Main Street overlay in the downtown and the station area sub-districts. And I think if council directed, we could look at a version of that that would expand it towards the El Camino Real parcels as well.
Thank you. So there, in the staff report, in the presentation, we saw the associated heights for the downtown specific plan and for the commercial districts. What is the current height for R3? And would that be staying constant and not changing with the current recommendations for R3?
So we were not proposing to change the height in the R3 district. And I'm just looking here, it's set at 35 feet. And just looking here, it's set at 35 feet. And it can actually go up to 40 feet for 20 dwelling units per acre or greater.
So I believe the R three, at least downtown, we have a housing element program that applies the AHO to R three. And so I believe with the AHO or the state density bonus, a developer offering 100% affordable can request certain incentives and concessions. Would that include a height increase? And if so, what would the limit on that be? And then also for the ones within half mile transit, and I guess within the VMT area. You could add on an additional, I think, three stories to that. So I guess what I'd like to be able to illuminate for residents who are trying to follow along. What are the outer bounds that could occur for 100% affordable R three development that we're looking at?
Just one second.
I can speak to the concessions and incentives that would allow a developer to waive all height standards. So there's, there's two ways that that could be done under state density bonus law. So as long as the project qualifies for a state density bonus, whether or not the project is intending to use the density. Bonus, i.e. build more units with the density bonus. The project's entitled to a certain number of incentives or concessions based on how many affordable, what percentage of affordable units are being provided in the development. So incentives and concessions, in order to use them, the applicant has to establish that the waiver or reduction of a development standard, regulation, policy, design standard would reduce an actual, would produce an actual cost reduction, thereby enabling the production of affordable housing. One such regulation or standard that can be waived or reduced would be height, another would be setback. There's specifically incentive, there's a specific incentive that allows for mixed use development in a, on a site that's not zoned for mixed use development. There's another way that applicants can also waive or reduce development standards. And that's through what is called a waiver under density bonus law. So as with incentives and concessions, if an applicant qualifies for a density bonus. They are entitled to unlimited waivers or reductions of development standards. Those have to be actual standards or requirements that if not waived or reduced would preclude development at the proposed allowable density under state density bonus law and our AHO. So you can get unlimited waivers or reductions of development standards if those standards would preclude your development. So in that case, an applicant would have to show that like unlimited height is necessary to achieve the allowable bonus level, I'm sorry, density bonus. But bonus level density.
Okay, I think I, I think I followed that. But I guess my point is that even when we're looking at increasing something to 30 units an acre for R three, for example. It could be significantly more if it's 100% affordable.
Yeah, well, yeah, or, I mean, under current law. It could be significantly hot, you know, the massing can be bigger if the development is precluded. If this, if a particular standard were to preclude development at the existing allowable density. So that's not even, this is not a new requirement. This has been in the law for decades.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yes, Councilmember Nash.
I think you said they could have the waiver or some of these incentives, even if they don't increase their density?
Yeah, so there's, cases have concluded that if you are entitled to a density bonus, but you don't actually utilize the density bonus. You still get incentives, concessions and waivers. Now, to be entitled to a density bonus, you have to be providing a particular, a percent of your units at affordable rates. And in Menlo Park, for a multifamily development, that of course can be no less than 15%.
Okay, so I think those are all my really detailed questions. I have one kind of general question that I'll save for when everyone's done with their questions and then we move on to the, our thoughts. So any other questions at this time? Wonky questions, clarifications? Oh, Councilmember Dor.
Yes, I'm looking at the specific plan heights on page 12 of the presentation where it shows all the different sub districts and proposed maximum stories. And when I look at this, something that comes to mind is what I've seen in doing some research is that if we want to have parking combined underneath a new development. There usually seems to be a required number of stories of, of housing or of commercial that's above it to make it worth having a parking space. And I know folks have shared about concerns about making sure there's still enough parking. And so when I see kind of the limit right now for the density increased option base as being four stories. I'm curious if you all have seen projects, housing projects that include parking that only have three stories of housing on top for a total of four stories. Is that, is that something that is being done or is it usually parking and then four or five stories of housing on top? Thank you.
So for this question, I'm going to ask Arnold Memorella, our architectural consultant, if he can weigh in on that.
Thank you for that question. So you're going to see housing projects in different cities. They can have anywhere from five stories of wood frame housing on top of a platform, concrete platform with parking. You see certain developments that are four stories, it's a slightly different building type, that's also pretty common. And then you're going to see projects that have, say, three stories or they're a mixed use. So I think you're going to get, you know, a variety of different mixtures of uses. Typically, housing developers will want to build more density. Once they get to a certain building type, the upper limit tends to be about five stories of wood framed housing over a two story platform. Usually made of concrete, but you will see four stories of wood frame. And you see even three stories or lower or mixture of uses, depending on what the cities are proposing for the development. So you see buildings that are three stories, four stories, five stories. Usually when the three stories are less, then you're not really putting the parking on top of the. No, you're not putting the housing on top of the parking. But you'll see a variety of different scenarios. And it just depends on what the densities that are allowed and what the heights are allowed by the jurisdiction.
Thank you. So it sounds like it is more common though to usually see, or because the monetarily for them, it works out to, if you have three or less stories. To not have parking underneath, but if you can have more, to do that design option of the concrete with wood frame on top.
Yeah, I mean, the least expensive construction is the wood framing. So if you can build without putting a concrete podium underneath it, you're going to save cost on a per unit basis. But as your densities go up, of course, that becomes less possible. And, and then it just comes down to how much parking that you think that you need for the number of units. And then at that point, it'll be determined like what type of arrangement. Well, sometimes you can do it on a bigger site where you actually put the parking garage in the middle and then just wrap the building around the parking garage. But on the smaller sites that you have here, that's going to be less likely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash, does underground parking count as a story, one of the stories that's allowed?
No, generally, if it's below grade, then no, it wouldn't count that.
Thank you. And actually, a question for staff, we've been hearing, so if you're within half mile of transit. I believe regardless of building type, you do not, a developer does not need to provide parking now. Developers still follow the market conditions. And I know some of them have bank loans and financing needs where a bank might not loan to them if they don't require parking. But are, does Menlo Park, I guess I'm just asking a question for the public. Does Menlo Park have plans if, if a bunch of developers decide to build without parking? To build a parking garage or what's the plan for parking downtown? That's the million dollar question I think a lot of people are asking. And that might be more of a question for us than for you, but where are we at with that?
Thank you. So yes, that is an important question. As one of our strategies in the housing element, we will be looking to seek to do affordable housing on one or more of our parking plazas. One of our first steps would be to do a feasibility analysis. And that will help, I think, identify where would be an appropriate space and then to look at our parking. So I don't think we have an answer and how or how much parking, but that's a consideration.
But that analysis will be coming for, it's not something that we just aren't thinking about, like it's, it's in the hopper to consider.
Yes, that is a part of our housing element program.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chow. I see Councilmember Nash with another question.
And parking is allowed, we could build a parking structure with the current zoning or the new zoning for downtown.
Yes, so as part of the housing element, we actually need to amend our specific plan to allow uses other than parking in our parking plazas.
And thank you, yes, and we will still allow parking.
If that is the direction that we receive on what types of uses we'd like to see on those parking plazas.
Following up with Councilmember Nash, we're converting seven commercial districts into one to C to B. One of those is P, parking. Will parking, let's say we decide one of the lots, we just want a parking lot. Is that a allowable use after we rezone P into C to B?
Yeah, I think the idea was just to layer on additional residential uses so the underlying zoning would not be removed or affected.
Thank you. I warned people this was going to get wonky and it is. So Vice Mayor Taylor, let's check in with you. Do you have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Willison. The questions that I had are actually just following up on some of the public comment. And give me one moment and I can pull those up. The first question is, there was a question about reviewing our open space. And is the open space a part of the safety element?
It's not within the safety element, no. Open space element is a separate, separate element. Or it's a, it's a combined element, but we're only, the housing element update project specifically focused on the safety portion of that combined element.
And is it too late to bring the open space into discussion? As a part of this process?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. Are there specific questions about open space that maybe that would help frame? If that could be included as part of this conversation or this discussion around housing?
Yes, thank you. And just going back to the, the public comment, the, the way that I interpreted. It is if we are looking at spaces or creating zoning that goes potentially over 100 units per acre. Making sure that we have adequate space for folks to be outside. And so I think they're directly related and I know that there will be some amenities provided by the developer. But just wanted to find out if we could bring that discussion as a part of our zoning when it comes to downtown to make sure that folks have access to open space or adequate access to open space. So does that help, Ms. Chow?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things to know, we do consider open space as part of our development regulations. So we already have that built into many of our, if not all of our zoning districts. So there is oftentimes sort of common open space and then there's private open space for the individual units. And where private open space is not provided, then there would be greater common open space. So that is one way to help ensure that there is open space as part of these developments. Another thing that we also have as a tool, if there is a subdivision, a homeownership opportunity that also looks to do recreation and loofahs, and so that would be contributed if it is a, if the development is associated with a subdivision map or which typically is related to a homeownership project.
Thank you. And do we, have we ever, I would say, updated the open space? Or is that something that we don't have to do?
We do updated, it was updated as part of our open space conservation and noise and safety element back in, I want to say, 2013. And so if there are things that are minimums for consistency, we can explore that. But that was not, diving into the details of the open space was not initiated as part of this project.
I have a follow up question on that one, if I may interject.
Yes.
Curious if, given that the parking lots are city owned, could open space be one of the options that the city considers along the list of continued parking or housing? Could a park be one of the options considered there?
I, I don't, I think so. I don't, I think that's a great idea. I mean, I, I think, yeah, as part of, we can look at what types of uses again, you know, if it's housing, parking, open space, other types of non residential space. If that is, is that a mix of uses, I think that can be part of the conversation.
Would that require a certain zoning conversation to include open space as one of the options for it?
I think we would have to amend that as well to add additional uses, but I would have to go back and look more specifically into the specific plan.
Vice Mayor Taylor, more questions?
I do have a couple of other questions, but I'm comfortable waiting if there's someone else that would like to ask questions.
I think the floor is yours. I would just go for it.
Thank you. My next question is about the design standards for the 100% affordable. I, well, this is more a comment. Can we create a standard that requires the developer for the affordable units to provide shading or covering? What I've noticed in a couple of the affordable housing projects that there aren't, there isn't any. So can that be included in the design standards?
Vice Mayor Taylor, can you elaborate on what it is you're seeing?
So if, if you look at the affordable housing projects, there isn't any covering shade. There's barely any. There's barely any trees. So if you want folks to use the outdoor space that was designed for them, you need to make it comfortable and at least provide some type of shading. We have the same issue in, I think, one of the parks that were a part of one of the development projects. Or do we need to, my question is, do we need to include that in the design standards in order for developers, for the affordable housing projects to have shading, shade or covering? Especially if there is zero tree canopy?
There's some discussion at the staff table.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if we're specifically looking at the specific plan, there are standards and there are guidelines. So things that are standards are things that need to be adhered to. Guidelines are sort of best practices, things that are desirable, but not things that are requirements. So I was just conversing with Arnold and there are some things that you're mentioning, Vice Mayor Taylor, but those are more of the guidelines. So if they are things that we want to be required, we would have to move them into the required, sort of the the standard column, if you will.
I would definitely be interested in that if there's support from other council members. Thank you.
I would be more in support if it applied to market rate as well. But also defining, is it open space provided at these? Just a little more specificity. I'd be interested in looking into it, but applying it to everyone.
Vice Mayor Willison, may I? It would be helpful to look at some of the the new apartments that have come online. First, market rate and the affordable. Just to see what the design standards are on both.
Okay, I think we can ask staff to follow up and look into that. Vice Mayor Taylor, more questions at this point?
No, I don't have anymore. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Councilmember Nash.
Could you please give us more information about the affordable housing overlay for the, and what the various levels are? Depending on the percentage, the sliding scale?
So the way that we've currently focused for this study session is on the, on 100% affordable development projects. And so at that, at that level, based on the discussions that we've had, we were proposing 100 dwelling units per acre. It sounds like the interest that we've heard from the public and at Planning Commission was for 150 dwelling units per acre maximum for that AHO. And again, this is for 100% affordable development. I would say at the, for a mixed income development, you could achieve, a developer could achieve a 50% state density bonus. And there's sort of a scale there of certain amount of affordability. It does get a little bit complex because depending on the level of affordability of the units, you can get certain amounts of density bonuses. So it's difficult to provide any one case there that's gonna, it's very much a case by case basis. And the development proposal would tell you what kind of scale of density that you might get for a mixed income development. I would say that whereas the 100% affordable housing developments that could apply the AHO would utilize all their bonus units as affordable units. The way that the AHO is currently structured, it would allow for a mixed income development to utilize those bonus units as market rate units rather than requiring them to be affordable.
So that's, I tried to read the municipal code, affordable housing overlay and got completely lost. It is very detailed. And yes, there's lots of different scenarios. I'm wondering if there is any plans to overhaul that and make it a little bit more straightforward or if that is possible. Because it is very, very difficult to understand. And one of the things that I would like to do is have a better, as we move forward, just have all of us know what are the possible cases as we approve this.
So I think as we've navigated the challenge of the state telling us that we need to combine the AHO and the state density bonus law and combine those two bonuses, I would say it is, it does become very complex. And trying to implement that would be a challenge. I think that's why at the moment we focus on the 100% affordable housing developments for the AHO and really targeting those particular developments and with the idea that we are trying to really spur affordable housing development in the community. Certainly, there's a place for a mixed income development. But with the other provisions and density increases that we're providing, I think we'd be open to direction on sort of simplifying the AHO or really just focusing it on those 100% affordable housing developments. Or we could develop also some more scenarios that would highlight kind of how the combination of the two for mixed income developments could be utilized.
Is there any best practices that we can look at with other cities? I find that the 100% AHO, that that is, you've done a good job explaining it in the staff reports. That makes sense. Where I really am wondering how it works is with, when we get down to the 50% and then all the different units. So I would like to know more about that before we go into final approval of it and just better understand it, if that's possible, realizing that you're, there's state mandates that we have to.
Certainly, I think we could work through some, sort of as was done with the 100% affordable developments with the one acre site at three dwellings per acre. I think we could come up with some prototypes to show you like what would you get for a mixed income development at the 50% state density bonus level?
Thank you. With, certainly, I would be interested in incentivizing as much affordable housing. I think we all would be as possible.
Councilmember Nash, if I may build off that. Yeah, I would also be very interested in some scenario analysis. That sounds like where you're headed. It'd be great if it could come back to us prior to kind of when we're looking at the zoning ordinances. So we can, maybe can come as like a standalone thing for us to discuss in the meantime. And then I was also curious, so we have our old AHO program. And then there's the state density bonus. Is where you're heading with our updated AHO looking more designed on our old AHO or more like the state density bonus? Does that question make sense? Just so I have a sense, because right now I'm like trying to even figure out what this AHO, local AHO is like.
So at the time that the AHO was created, we tried to mimic somewhat of state density bonus. So it is, it is complex. And where, depending upon the level of affordability and the percentage of affordability, those two mix together and they're there, then there's sort of this percentage increase per.
So I was looking at the state density bonus and it showed like 100%. You get the 80% bump at 24% low income. You get a 50% bump or if it's moderate income, it's. So even just looking at the low income level, like to simplify, I think would be really helpful because that's how the, our BMR 15% is, it's like the average of of low. So I think if you just want to simplify for us on a table and just looking at low, at least that gives us some thing that we can go across and understand what those multipliers are. And then we could, in like a little footnote, you'd be like, this is crazy because if it depends on the affordability level, it's like a million different scenarios. But like, just give us something to give us a sense, I think would be really helpful.
Thank you, that that helped. I think we can craft something. I just want to circle back to sort of to the timing. I know that we're trying to receive direction here so that we can go back to the drawing board and bring something back. We did hear from the Planning Commission, a desire to bring this back in October, given the sort of the urgency of this this matter and making sure that we do bring this forward in a timely manner, definitely before the January 31st, 2024 timeline. I am a little concerned that if we try to tweak too much and come back before the council, then go to the Planning Commission because it is a multi-step process to get a, bring it forward to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and then a two-step hearing for introduction and adoption. We are.
Could it maybe be an info item where you just show us where you're heading with the sliding scale? I think just like we want to have a sense of like what we're really talking about here.
I think that we would want your feedback. And that might not lend itself to the dialogue that we need. If this is something you would want staff to spend time and pursue.
So realizing that there's a lot of interest and possible feedback on that, what would, do you think we should just? What's your suggestion? Because definitely want to make it as easy as possible for.
Sure, thank you. So I think if there is guidance that the council would like to explore both for the 100% affordable and the mixed income option, I think that's where we need sort of the guidance. And if there's any sort of minimum threshold that you're looking at. So right now, I believe, I want to say it's like a, in our current AHO, let's say it's like a 22, like you have to have a certain percentage of, even above what our minimum 15% dense or inclusionary requirement. You have to exceed that in order to be eligible to use the AHO. And so maybe if there's, like, we want it set at a certain threshold to be eligible for a mixed in income project or, or no, we just want to focus on 100% affordable to capture the density bonuses. So I think we can receive some of that feedback and then we can go and start to put the pencil to the end of the paper and looking at the sliding scale.
So is there? Do we have a choice of only doing 100% affordable? Or, I mean, I guess, are you giving us a choice?
Yeah, so. So currently, our AHO is applied to mixed income and 100% affordable. If there is desire to focus the AHO to 100% affordable, we think that is possible to modify our AHO to, to focus on just 100% affordable projects or a certain percentage of affordable projects.
I'd be more inclined to allow flexibility because I think that, as was stated by, I think it was HLC, that there's going to be some projects, especially on public land, and that's going to be 100% affordable. And then there's going to be other projects that are going to need to be mixed use. Looking at the state density bonus law as a model, it has, you know, the 100% affordable. And then it has, like the example I gave you, at like 24% low income, it gives you the 50% multiplier. So could we just base it off the state density bonus law and like copy that for our city?
We'll need to evaluate it more, but I think we could. I mean, like the initial AHO was based upon state density bonus law. So I think we can mimic and it's changed. So I think we can, we can update it to reflect that.
I'm a little bit confused about the the back and forth on the DIAS. And something, I don't know if this is helpful or not, but it's my understanding that usually for-profit developers at maximum would put 15 to 20% below market rate. And it seems like we would still like to if there are for-profit developers that are developing on the non-city owned land. We still want them to do the BMR and have that higher ratio. But when I hear a limit or requirement of 24%, I wonder if that would then become unfeasible for for-profit developers. And maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Bonus. So they still have, we still have our local BMR policy that's 15%.
Okay.
It's just a city policy. But then to achieve the extra density bonus locally, they'd have to exceed that.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I am interested in having a variety of options, but just as simple as possible.
One, one thing, if the council wishes to provide direction on, similar to how we've prepared the density bonus for the 100% affordable projects to come out to a 150 dwelling unit per acre density with that in mind for a mixed income development. If they're, so thinking about some of these commercial sites spread throughout the city, that it would be at 30 dwelling units per acre max. If there's sort of a target density that council would be comfortable with, whether any feedback on that might be helpful. And then we can structure the density bonus percentage so that it combines the state density bonus law to give us that desired max density.
Are you looking for that on the fly? Because I don't know if I can do that math right here, right now.
No, I think, not, not asking about the percentage, but an idea of, and certainly, this is a question on the fly, but an ideal density maximum that you would, so up to 100 dwelling units per acre, for instance, for a development on a C1 zoned parcel or something like that. But no.
I think you might be losing some of us. So I don't want to get bogged down in that because that would be for a mixed affordability, mixed use or mix. But I get where you're going. I just don't know if we, I feel like we're going to do some scope creep here and I just want to make sure. I also see Vice Mayor Taylor's hand raised and I think Councilmember Combs I saw was itching at the button too. So Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you. I'll let Councilmember Combs go ahead. I'll wait.
Is, is there, you remind me again, what all does the affordable housing overlay apply to? Just so I can have, make sure I understand where that is.
Sure, so it will be updated. So it currently applies to the entire specific plan area. And then we'll be adding it to all of our 69 opportunity sites that are included in this housing element. And then the R3 sites located around downtown would be eligible.
Okay, and that's what is in our current application to the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're obligated to deliver, to be clear. It is, is there a reason why, if we're going to this sort of mixed income approach, why we wouldn't just rely on like BMR rules versus like an overlay to like accomplish the like encouragement of that, of that in general? Or is it, is it this idea that we just wanted to apply to these opportunity sites? And so that's why you would sort of do a non, do an overlay that's affordable housing plus, I guess?
If I, if I understand your question correctly, the, the idea is to incentivize projects that are going above and beyond our BMR requirements.
Yeah, but couldn't you put that in the BMR requirement itself? These incentive mechanisms versus doing a separate overlay?
It could be structured different ways, I believe. It's just the way that we have communicated that in the housing element and through public discourse has been to update the AHO.
Yeah, but currently that that update is, is in connection with 100% affordable housing, right? Those projects.
Yeah, that's what we've evaluated at this point. But the AHO as it exists today, the one that that was created, I think in 2013, does allow for mixed income projects as well as 100% affordable. So getting some clarity about whether we want to continue on with that option for mixed income projects or just focus on 100% affordable, I think is part of, part of the discussion.
And have we gotten any projects? And have we gotten any projects using?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Combs. So as Tom mentioned, so it's applicable to the specific plan area. It's also applicable to a few sites that were rezoned R4 S AHO as part of the prior housing element cycle. And so there are two projects that have utilized the AHO, the two mid pen projects that are located on Willow Road. We also use the the R4S standards, AHO standards for the other core housing and the mid pen project over on the VA campus as well.
Okay, those are 100% affordable.
Yes.
Those, okay.
Yes.
But like things like, like Spring Line, like that, that the component that is affordable there is based on just BMR, correct?
Yeah. So with Spring Line, they're a little different. They were entitled during the period where we were not enforcing our BMR ordinance. And so they do include BMR, they do include BMR units, but not through our inclusionary zoning requirement.
Oh, wow. Thanks.
So building off Councilmember Combs, then we don't currently have any projects that utilized the mixed, the lower multiplier for non 100% affordable for the AHO.
So we have projects in the city that have utilized the city's BMR ordinance.
Not to get the.
And our state density bonus law, but not the
Okay.
A mixed income project that utilized the AHO, but they used other density bonuses.
So I guess a fundamental question is, is it a thing? So because it seems like what we're hearing or what we've heard from some folks is like, there's two types of major, there's two ways to get affordable housing, 100% affordable, which usually is generated on public land. We're looking at the Flood School site, the downtown parking lots, land dedication, potentially on SRI. That's 100% affordable. And then there's inclusionary, which is our city currently has a 15% requirement for over 20 units for market rate. So you have market rate and a percentage of that is affordable. What this is looking at, the AHO bonus, is these like Frankenstein projects that are like maybe 50/50 or some other combination. Do those get built? Like, is that a thing? Are we like spinning our wheels, trying to figure something out? That's not even something that is, is happens, or is it good to leave open that flexibility because it does happen?
Thank you. So at the, at the time the AHO was created, we were trying to provide greater incentives than state density bonus law. Since then, as you've seen, there's been iterations of state density bonus law that has become very competitive, like 100% affordable has sort of that, that less, no restriction on the density. So but what we've learned is that it can be additive. So there, that's, I think, where some of the additional bonus comes in, where you're looking to apply the city's local affordable housing overlay and then state density bonus law. So used together, it could be a very incentivizing tool, if you will.
Are developers building those mixed income developments?
We were trying to look quickly earlier today and just on some examples, we found a couple. And I can, one was like in Belmont moments in San Francisco that were using a greater that, a greater percentage than what seemed to be the sort of typical inclusionary zone requirement. We don't know that, we haven't done enough research to know sort of what, you know, what sort of financing was incorporated or what some of the incentives were. But we did see a couple of projects that had greater, a greater mix of market rate and affordable development.
Okay, thanks. And just to point out for members of the public, the financing is totally different. If you're looking at a 100% affordable development, using tax credits and there's nonprofit developers and all kinds of things versus a Mercury, who's basically using the market rate units to pay for the BMRs, Councilmember Combs.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure I understand that, like, I thought, and granted, understand you're, you're sort of like, there's two-way inclusionary or like 100% affordable. But I thought one of the reasons why we would be possibly looking at increasing the density with regards to the affordable housing overlay is that this may entice private property owners that you may get to a density level where then it makes sense. Because in theory, like if we're basing this all on public land, then it makes sense at 100 units. You can, you can do that, that, that deal if I'm giving you the land. I thought, and in terms of part of this incentive is that like, well, maybe this will like entice a private owner. I mean, and partly we, it will apply to all opportunity sites. But is that, and I think that the question is, is 150 enough though still?
Yeah, that's a good point. I appreciate that. And I might have oversimplified with my example. It has to be public land. It has to be a land dedication. I do know, speaking with some affordable housing developers and the feedback that we've consistently received is that they want more. And so maybe they do have their eyes set on private land and it's enough of an advantage over market rate development that, that it works for them. So good point.
And one other point, I guess. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Vice Mayor Taylor, you've had your hand raised.
Thank you. I'll make this quick. And this is actually a follow-up from Councilmember Combs' comment and yours to Mayor Willison. Just looking at what is 100, the 100% affordable projects and then the inclusionary. The inclusionary isn't affordable, so I hope that we can actually look at rent limits as they relate to AMI. It's my first comment. The second one was going back to Mr. Smith's example that he, well, he almost gave us. For me, it would be helpful if we're talking about the, I don't know if it was the C1 or C2 zoning, if we had a map up in order to do that exercise that you mentioned earlier. And those were my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we allowed to apply rent limits to the our affordable units or those set by some entity? The state AMI or county?
Rent limits can be can be limited by public agencies in exchange for financial benefits to the developer, which is a complicated standard under the Costa Hawkins Act. I, I think what council member, or I understand what council member Taylor was suggesting is not necessarily doing like a rent control scenario, but limiting, but having the rent, rent, rent increases, I'm sorry, rent limits be set at a lower amount based on AMI, which is permissible under the Health and Safety Code. And, and that's not something that we're doing as part of the rezoning. That would be an update to the city's BMR guidelines. Currently, the city's low income rent thresholds are set based on 80% AMI and they can be, they could be limited by 60, by 60% AMI.
So we could give direction to staff to return at a later, when there's time or to revisit that BMR guideline for that rent limit? Okay, I'd be supportive of that. I'm seeing a nod here from Councilmember Nash. So I know we have a lot on our plate, but yeah. Okay, Vice Mayor Taylor, is that all your questions?
Yes.
See, I think we're, are we wrapping up questions or Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to comment and see if staff has any feedback on it. And that's one of the ways we seem to get more BMR units also is through the public bonus and through community amenities. And is that anything that ties into all of this? And perhaps we can or should tweak as we think about different levels of affordability within market rate developments? Or different numbers of units and affordability?
So the, the way that the development standards would be structured for the specific plan area at the bonus level, with that density increase option going up to 100 dwellings per acre downtown and in the station areas, that would be at the public bonus, public benefit bonus level. And as part of that, a developer could opt to provide additional residential, affordable residential units as part of that public benefit to get that density.
And that's something that's just negotiated on a, on project by project basis?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other, I guess, clarifying questions, Councilmember Combs?
Yes, I suppose this is my last one. I just want to make sure I understand. So like, because with the proposals or at least to the specific plan and the increase in, in both height levels and density, the highest sort of in theory, new construction we could get to is in Station Area East, which is possibly 10, 10 stories. Right? And so I want to make sure, again, that I'm like understanding. And so that is Station Area East, thinking of it in terms of very specific parcels, is that's the 711? Rate? It would be that parcel? Huh? Station Area East? Or if it's not that, can you tell me like exactly what is on some of the properties that are in that area and like what's on them now?
Is that Cafe Baroni?
Is it, is it only Cafe Baroni? Is it, is that it, that development?
So there would be a number of different developments here at Cafe Baroni. The BBC. Believe McDonald's. There's a FedEx center in that area.
Okay. And so only on that side of the tracks? So it wouldn't, it wouldn't make it to the 711 or the Jorgensen?
It does extend beyond, I believe, just trying to get a.
And so again, I would just like, so because there, it, it would be adjacent or next door to like two-story apartment buildings. So you know, it would block out the sun and the rain, I mean, and the train noise. But I do, I do think it's, and I mean, obviously, and then where the Phil's Coffee is, like that is not going to change. McDonald's might, I, I think, you know, the Cafe Baroni complex, I think is unlikely, but we could in theory see it.
For the sake of the public, could we please bring up the map that is being referred to on page nine?
Yeah, all right. Those are all, I just want to make sure I understood, like, because, because this then becomes what we're talking about as, as the highest that possible. And I know this is all possible. And I just want to make sure I understand where those are placed. Because, you know, 10 stories is different than four or five stories or even six stories.
Although it does say Alma is limited, Alma's lower. If I'm reading this right, and I guess that's a question for staff, that that, that street is actually called out and differentiated on that side of, of the train?
Yes, that's correct. Thanks for pointing that out.
Do you see that, Councilmember Combs? So on slide 12.
It scales down from the, from this other side of the, the station.
But along those lines, there's three, there are three sub-districts, the downtown, Station Area East and Station Area West, that all could go to 10 stories with the affordable housing overlays. And there are and SP 1763, correct? And there are residential near those.
How tall is the Valparaiso University? Is that nine stories? There's the project across from Menlo School. It is nice.
I don't know.
Okay, anyway, I think it's, we're talking like that type of height. Would the setbacks that we require, and this is like, you didn't prepare for this. Are those relatively comparable to what we see at that site? Or did that site have overly generous setbacks? Because I, I don't think anyone, I don't know, I've never met anyone who's like, can you believe that building? Like, that seems to just fit in with the neighborhood. And I don't know if it's because of the trees or because of the setback or, or what. Anyway, I, if you want to, you don't have to answer that this second, but it's just something to think about. Okay. So we've been, I've been learning a lot from my colleagues, really good questions being asked. But did you have an answer to that, Mr. Smith, or should we move on here?
I think we would need more time to coordinate on the answer.
I think that'd be a really helpful data point for us because I think it's a very known building that doesn't feel scary to a lot of us. And that would be helpful for us because when we're just talking about setback numbers and FAR and height and density, it's very hard to conceptualize what we're talking about. So something familiar that people are used to would be extremely, I think, helpful for all of us. So great questions, and I'd like us to start moving towards direction. I believe you showed a slide at the very end of your presentation that had kind of the categories of feedback that you needed from us. And what I'd like the council to do, well, we have two choices. One is one person can go through everything and the other is we take one topic and we all discuss. Okay, I'm seeing a nod from Councilmember Combs. Let's take one topic, discuss, see if we can come up with some direction. And then at the very end, we'll do a recap of everything. Okay, so we're going to that slide. Okay, so let's start with the downtown specific plan. So does anyone want to give direction? I think the focus of the conversation, there's a couple of things going on with the downtown specific plan. There's removing the cap of 680, which I think we all agree we have to do. That's a commitment. There's a minimum density of 20 units an acre that's being proposed. Does anyone have issues with that? And I think that's to prevent these large units from taking over. I'm seeing a couple nods of that being okay. So speak, we're going to try to go through this. One thing is including El Camino Real Northeast Residential and El Camino Real Southeast. So that, those are the two zoning districts where the Stanford Middle Plaza and Big Five are located. And then where Spring Lines located, we've heard a lot of feedback about adding those back in. Do folks have thoughts about, I would be in favor of adding those back in? Is anyone against adding those back in?
Just to confirm, back into the specific plan?
Sorry, upzoning those, and I would say proportionally to whatever we end up with on the, we'll get to that on what we're going to land with. But not, not omitting those from the discussion about changes to the downtown specific plan. I'm seeing some nods. Vice Mayor Taylor, I can't see you. So I'm going to have to count on you to jump in if there's anything that you want to add.
I believe Vice Mayor Taylor's connection was broke. She is rebooting.
Okay, so we'll go back to her when we go through. Hi, Vice Mayor Taylor. So we were going through, I don't know when you jumped off, removing the 680 cap, doing the minimum of 20 units an acre. And we were just talking about including El Camino Real Northeast Residential and El Camino Real Southeast. So there's 10 downtown specific plan sub-districts, only eight of them were originally recommended to be modified. But I'm seeing nods on the dais of including those two omitted zoning districts into the modification that staff does. I'm seeing Councilmember Combs, yes.
Yeah, I just have to poke, poke the bear on why were they removed in the first place or wasn't initially included? And was, if I remember, based on specific communication? And was if I remember based on specific communication from a property owner? In one case, was that a factor here? And if this is a long answer, then it's, it's fine because I think we're directionally aligned here, but I'm just curious.
I don't believe we included them in the zoning changes because of any property owner communication. It's more just a reflection of one of the districts had densities that were already. Pretty high compared to the others, although I would say the height and FAR we had not bumped up proportionally. And then the other one being mostly redeveloped the spring, the spring line project.
So, I mean, I just think if we have an opportunity to produce more like Big Five. Then it would be, it's just strange to me that we're not proportionally doing. So I'm seeing, I'm seeing nods. Okay. And Vice Mayor Taylor, I don't want to lose you, so if there's any difference of opinion or anything, please just unmute yourself and jump into the conversation. Or if you're excited about something, speak up. Okay. Yes, please.
Thank you. Not sure if you've gotten to this already, but increasing the base?
We have not gotten to the general zoning. I was saving that one. But we're about to get there. I wanted to bring up the Main Street overlay for El Camino Real. This has to do with resident retail serving stuff and expanding the requirement we have. On Santa Cruz Avenue to kind of first floor. El Camino Real as well. I'm seeing a nod from Councilmember Nash. I'm, yes, Councilmember Door.
Of encouraging retail and commercial on the first floor of Santa Cruz as well as of.
I believe City Manager Murphy is going to chime in here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just double checking. Whether with, with staff about. Whether this is consistent with the overall scope that we're trying to pursue on this timeline versus a subsequent item. So I know there's another number of restrictions for HCD compliance in terms of. Applying additional restrictions to achieve the housing. So just double checking with.
And we could exempt 100% residential.
Just along those lines, I think it would be. Any additional restrictions on residential could be perceived negatively, so.
Yeah, I think that is a good point. It's not part of the programs that we are implementing as part of the housing element and. HCD does call out constraints, new constraints that are added on residential development. And so we have not acknowledged in the housing element that we would be placing an additional constraint on development by requiring. Ground floor, retail, personal service uses in a. Different subdistributes of the, the, the specific plan. So. I think we would need to do a little bit more. Analysis to confirm that we could do that and checking in before we could commit to it.
So I think if you could look into it and, and let us know what you discover. I think that's something. That we've heard neighborhoods serving retail and as we. Densify and want to keep our VMT low, making sure that our new residents and our existing residents can access the services locally that they need. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, so I would say, why wouldn't you also then put that on Willow Road? Right? And, and so then I, I think that this becomes a bit of a Pandora's box. I, I don't know that, I mean, with the downtown strip, you can make a very strong, you know, argument about a retail history, about storefronts, about. I don't really know if you can make that about El Camino. I'm going to be very honest. And, and I don't know if that's the way it's going and, and obviously we've allowed development. If, if you look at like the Stanford development. Where there is no, where certainly large swaths of it does not have retail. And again, I would just say that like, if you're going to do it for El Camino, you have to do it for Willow. And, and to be clear where I stand, I would say. Again, you, you only do it in places where there is the strong argument and that is the, the, the primary sort of downtown strip.
Councilmember Nash?
So I think there is an argument to do it on, at least on El Camino. And for example, my understanding is that the Safeway is not required to be. Retail serving. Or community serving. And I think there's, if we add more housing, more density there and then do not have the services. We are going to be, as. Mayor Willison said, we are going to be increasing the VMT. We're going to be. Creating a situation where people are now going out. And to other cities, to other places to. Get those services and we need to, I think there's an argument that we need to keep them. Locally, especially where we have already established them. We're seeing two. Establishments leaving right now. There may be others and I think it's important just perhaps we can do it with incentives. As opposed, you know, if an overlay doesn't work, but I think it's important to try to keep the.
Just.
Services there.
I won't disagree with you. I, I think a grocery store is different from other services and there's really nowhere limited ways to mandate a grocery store. I know Palo Alto has tried it. It's not been very successful for them, but. But there's also two grocery stores on Willow Road. So it's just like, there is no difference. There, there is no difference and the only difference is that the people who are close to El Camino have come to you and made their case and you've. But I think if you look at it, you really can't say that there is a difference.
Well, I would say that you're, that we are. Increasing the density greatly in the downtown area, which is not happening in the same way on Willow Road or any other place.
Because it's closer transit.
Okay, I think we might be going a little off topic here. And I do think when we get to commercial, we're going to be talking a little bit about the same topic where, like as it pertains to something like Willow Market. So. Put a pin in this conversation. Councilmember Door, did you have something or did you were telling me somebody?
Yeah, I'm just curious if we could revisit both El Camino and Willow Road at a later date because I am appreciating the, the short timeline we have to turn around. The rest of the zoning, but I am also interested in Willow Road being included in the conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think we all want to be able to grab an ice cream cone and a hamburger close to our homes. So. Anyway, so yes, Ms. Chow.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to get maybe a little bit more clarification on the approach and it, and it sounds like we might be sort of pausing, like. We like the idea, but we're going to pause it and keep it separate from sort of the, the housing piece that we're trying to move forward, but on. But maybe not. But I guess for just clarification on the Main Street overlay, so the way that it works today along Santa Cruz Avenue is that. The ground floor has to be retail. So are we saying for, the idea for El Camino is that the ground floor, it has to be a mixed use, like it has to be commercial and then secondary is residential? Or if someone chooses to do a mixed use project, the ground floor needs to be retail. So it's not personal service, it's.
So maybe we're not quite baked there, but I think the intention and maybe instead of a requirement, as Councilmember Nash said, an incentive. So I don't know, we talked about public benefit bonuses. So like if you go to the bonus density. You pay a public benefit bonus. I don't know if retail is public benefit bonus, but. I think the intent, the policy intent that we have is to somehow incentivize. Less office. Or less 100% off, like to not lose the community serving retail that at least we have now. So if there's a way to, to include some of that into our timeline of January 24. We'd love to hear your thoughts. If it's not possible, then it's scope creep. And, and we understand that, I think. Although I do think we're going to be talking, but we want to revisit it. Time permitting, when, yeah, because this is something that's come up a long time. Does that give you enough direction?
So it sounds like if. There's something small that we can tweak. We might be able to add that in now, but it sounds like maybe the, the bigger conversation might, and what's going through my head right now is sort of the design standards. So what? Sort of the design standards along Santa Cruz may not be transferable to say El Camino Real, just given the size of the parcels and.
Well, I see because as you transfer that Main Street overlay, there's a whole package of design standards that goes along with it that you would then have to create if you copied this over to El Camino. Is that what you're getting at?
I mean, there are, there are certain design standards like transparency of windows and heights of plate to ceiling height. And there might be things that are already in. And I don't have the, the code in front of me right now to sort of give that comparison, but there are. Things that we would need to make sure that they, so that someone can build, you know, and maybe get the development that you're, you're looking for.
I think I've given you all the direction that I can think of. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any. Other, but yeah, I think, I think we've stated the intent that we're looking for and if there's a quick. I don't know, quick, but if there's a January 24 possibility to get at what we're looking at, please bring it forward to us and if not. But then I guess we're bringing up the Willow Road situation.
And, and I just want to be clear, when I'm talking about Willow Road, I'm just not talking about in my district. I'm talking about all of Willow Road because. Willow Road on the other side of Highway 101 also has retail currently. And that, making sure that that's preserved. And again, I know that they're not in, in the housing element, but. If we're doing this sort of overlay. Then, then, then it should be consistent throughout the city for major thoroughfares.
Yeah, and as, as I listen to Councilmember Combs and think about like what the intent is again, to have that like ice cream cone available for everyone to walk to. It might be kind of its own priority policy issue that we really need to tackle citywide. Like neighborhood corner serving thing. I mean, it, it could, I could see that this is becoming scope creep. So I think we're all interested in living in a community that has neighborhood serving retail. And so I think we were trying to sneak something in. Because while you're rezoning, just go ahead and throw in one more little thing. But the sense I'm getting is it's not quite that simple.
And I guess the other piece of that is that we don't want to lose what we have now. Not just increasing it, but also not losing the.
Thank you. And I'm seeing Vice Mayor Taylor. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Taylor. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, to agree and ask for a clarifying question. Is the request around looking at El Camino and Willow, is that a general plan amendment? Or is that spot zoning?
Ooh, that's a big question. Ms. Chow, or is this getting us all to why this becomes a whole other topic that we need to revisit at a later date? I'll ask someone on staff.
So I, I think it may depend on what is it that we're proposing to do. So if we're staying within. The FARs, the, the lay-in uses, so. Generally, the zoning is consistent with the lay-in use designation in the general plan. So if we're looking to expand the uses, which. I mean, it doesn't sound like we're trying to do that, but if we're looking to expand the uses, we might need to. Do a general plan amendment if it's, or a zoning code change. So. I think it really depends on what. We're trying. To accomplish and then. Then we would sort of frame it in whether it's a zoning ordinance amendment, a rezoning or a general plan amendment.
Councilmember Nash?
My concern would be if we're upzoning right now and then we have to find incentives later, perhaps. That would be more difficult than trying to fold it into having one of the incentives for the upzoning be. Some of this community serving uses. So just if it's possible to do it later without having to create more. Upzoning or whatever for incentives. That's good, but if we have to. Right now, while we are upzoning, perhaps that is an incentive that we want to include if that is possible. Just not lose this opportunity.
I guess up to, to that point, like with the step up FAR or something, include you get some bonus thing if you put in first floor retail. I don't, I don't know. Okay, I think we've, I think we've exhausted this direction, but I think you get what we're getting at and you can talk amongst yourselves. So again, we're at the downtown specific plan. I'm going through the different. Policy questions. I think there was a question about removing parking minimums downtown in the downtown specific plan, which seemed kind of moot, given there's a state law that. Doesn't have parking minimums. Do you, is it, does it make any sense to do that formally anyway?
Yeah, I think that state law would essentially make the parking minimums irrelevant. I think there was discussion potentially about parking maximums. That we heard at Planning Commission. I don't know if there was any.
I'm actually, I, I'm not ready for that yet. So. I, I don't know enough about it to even go there. I feel like, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious where did, was there an actual figure thrown out at the Planning Commission? I did not see it, whether it's like one parking for every four. Dwelling unit or did they?
No, there was no, there was no specific rate example given.
I think given the task at hand, it's like, we're doing a lot. So I think we're good. Unless anyone feels super strongly. Okay. Okay, let me, so there's kind of two more policy questions related to the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. One is. The step up FAR, which I'll leave that to the last. And before we get to that, let's get to the densities. So there's kind of the original El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan from 2012. Which has to go because some of those are below the 30 units an acre that were required and that we've committed to in the housing element. Then there's the December 2022 proposal. And then there's this new recommendation, it sounds like both from staff and from Planning Commission. To turn it up even more. Now, this really is only about market rate because affordable, as we've discussed multiple times tonight. Can use all kinds of, of mechanisms. To get over these numbers. So the question before council now is. What we want to do regarding. The density in the El Camino specific plan. I have thoughts, but if anyone wants to share theirs. All right, I'll go for it. So. I think that there's, I, I'm actually in favor of the base density increase option. And I'm in favor of that because I think that we're going to need. While the theme is kind of affordable housing and this is more about market rate housing. I think we're not going to necessarily get all of our affordable housing through 100% affordable projects. And we're going to need market rate housing and inclusionary to help us get there. And so I think that that, that's one reason. I think that one piece of feedback we all hear constantly is about downtown and about. No offense to our rug store owners. But that we want revitalization, we want different things downtown and to make. Developing and revitalizing downtown attractive for someone to come in and, and turn these older buildings around. I think we need to offer more density. And then I think that would, like the biggest tool that the council has to revitalize downtown to me is zoning. So that's that. I also think, I know we're looking at. Affordable housing developments being quite dense potentially with that AB 1763, you know, seven, eight, I don't, 10 stories potentially downtown. Think we're already going to see density downtown in our parking lots potentially and, and elsewhere. And so I also think that we want to make sure that downtown, just like we don't, we don't want to cluster all affordability, one affordability level. All in one place. So I think it's great that we're going to have affordable downtown and I think that. The AB 1763 is really going to give that advantage to affordable housing developers. But I also think that we're going to want a mixed income population downtown. And so I think we want to, again, incentivize more even market rate. We've heard about the five over one or five over two building type. We also are working to affirmatively further fair housing and we're seeing 100 units an acre in the Bayfront. And so this is a way. I know that there was a desire to downzone District One and when that conversation happened, I said, you know, I'm looking to upzone. In downtown. And so this is a chance to make right on that. And then ultimately, I think that we have got our mid-cycle review right around the corner. So we have to hit this January 2024 timeline. To rezone, but right in three years, three and a half years, we're going to be evaluated for how we are hitting what we said we were going to hit. And so I think we're going to need, um, this density, again, um, we're going to need all the tools in our toolbox, um, to get there. A hundred percent affordables, market rate with inclusionary, everything. And so I just feel like this is our opportunity, um, to, to really, um, to, to do that. So I'm really curious to hear what my colleagues have to say. I know it's a big change from where we were 10 years ago. But I think our city is in a different place than we were, um, 10 years ago. And I see this, um, as an exciting opportunity. Um, and like I said, we're going to have the tall buildings anyway. So, um, who would like to go next? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, plus one. Um, I, I think, uh, if anything, that the challenge is, is going to be like, this is still a small area and, and, and are those parcels really going to change over? But yeah, just, just, uh, I'm, I'm supportive.
Thank you. Councilmember Door.
Thank you. Um, so I agree with all your reasons for needing to increase mixed, uh, mixed income housing downtown. Increase, uh, at market rate with inclusionary, um, below market rate housing units. And, um, I was surprised to hear Mr. Smith share that. They think according to the, um, EIR, the Environmental Impact Report Consultant, that going up to 150 wouldn't trigger an EIR change.
That's going up, if you can clarify that, that's going up to 150 for the affordable housing overlay, but not for the base, not for the non-bonus-y things.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. So, um, scratch that last one then, because I, I, I was.
I know we've heard feedback from some who want us to exceed. Um, there's always, you always get it from every side. So there's some people that want us to go down. There's some people that want us to go up. And from what I understood from the Planning Commission and from staff is that this, uh, density, can't read this, density increase option is the ceiling of what could be accomplished and hit our January 2024 target. The only thing like that we have that EIR flexibility on is really the AHO. Did I get that right, Mr. Smith?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification there. Um, then the one place here that I am still thinking about is in these areas that currently say 50 units per acre for the downtown adjacent and El Camino, uh, thinking back to what that means. So on a few pages later, it says that this means about four stories total is how much we could bring in. And if we're thinking about uh, having the ability to have parking underneath of these units, um, this housing unit and potential new retail that we're trying to add. It seems like higher densities might be needed to incentivize that kind of development and that kind of growth. And so maybe it's on the heights and what the height limits are and/or maybe looking at what this density is, but trying to make sure that what we're creating is, is viable for developers along the downtown corridor as well, not just in the downtown and those three sub-districts that say 100 units per acre. And I'm curious for thoughts. I'd love to have conversation here.
Just one question, but, but they don't have to provide parking, right? So, um, so in that case, like, uh, like a developer has options. I, I would, I would just point, point that out, um, that it.
That's only if it's a hundred percent affordable, correct?
No, all development downtown does not need parking.
Got it. Thank you.
I believe even, um, the Clockworks, um, restaurant needs no parking because of this loss, like really like all development within a half mile of transit. So, um, it sounds like you're curious about going more, but you're aligned with where we're at.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
So I am not aligned with, um, on this. I think, well, actually, let me ask a question first. If we could upzone, can we ever downzone? Or is this a one-way street? Well, not once it's been built, but as far as the regulations, because that's certainly what we're seeing in the Bayfront area.
Yeah. So there's the, uh, no net loss provision that would require i- if we were to downzone something later on, then we would have to choose another area of the city to upzone to the level to make up for where we downzoned.
So based on that, and I actually think it is 10 stories, um, 11 stories with the sea level rise in the Bayfront area is too high. I've always thought it's been too high and I think it's too high for downtown as well. Um, I think since, just because it is in the Bayfront area does not mean that we need to do it everywhere. I think that, um, seven stories, very honestly, um, with the affordable, the extra three stories for 1763 is where I would cap it. So I, um, I would, I would support the proposed, the 1222 proposed base unit, which I guess, um, it means that we will still exceed, um, seven stories with, um, or could exceed seven stories with, uh, the additional three stories.
And we could get nine stories.
It would be nine stories, right? But I get, um, I am, I, I believe that the December 2022, um, proposed base bonus is, um, the better choice for, um, the downtown specific plan area. I actually think that the increase in density is fine while holding for the FAR, the, um, and the heights. I think that one of the things that I have heard is that smaller units are, um, will help us get, um, more diverse rents. And so having an option, having the developer have an option to do market rate, smaller market rate units within the same, um, mass would be, um, I think would be a good option as, um, just giving more choices. But I think that, um, I, I will not vote for, uh, actually, we're not voting tonight, but I would not support, um, the, increased heights.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Nash. Uh, Vice Mayor Taylor, your thoughts?
Thank you. Um, I am, well, half and half. I'm supportive of the, the increase and still supportive of downzoning. Um, there are still, I don't know how many parcels left in District One, um, that's zoned for housing. Um, and we have yet to get the neighborhood serving retail that's needed, even though we have, I don't know, over a thousand units, um, being built now. So I'm still supportive of downzoning and now's an opportunity. Um, since we are upzoning other areas and, um, and those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs.
I, I just want to confirm that like at the bonus levels, it's still discretionary based on, on, on council, like, right? We, they won't, I, I mean, uh, we're set inside the affordable housing issue. A hundred percent affordable, but, but they don't get the, to the bonus, that's essentially a development agreement, right? But between the developer and us, whether they get to bonus, because u- usually you have to give some, something for the bonus.
So I, I think, um, you're referring to the public benefit bonus versus the density bonus. So the specific plan does offer a, a base and public benefit bonus, which is a different procedure than the community amenities in the Bayfront area. So depending upon the proposed development, it may come to the city council for review. Likely it would trigger, um, just a use permit and architectural control, which would be a planning commission, um, review and action. If a development agreement is not, um, sought, which is, which can happen, um, for a bonus level development in the specific plan, then the city council, um, would not be part of the discretionary action review.
I have another comment that is not on this list of feedback items that are formally listed for the downtown specific plan, but I want to bring up here. Is around housing minimums. And so could you clarify for us, what is the current housing minimum for the specific plan?
So currently there are no minimum requirements for residential in the specific plan. Uh, developer could come in and propose to build out the FAR. Um, there are some certain requirements or limits on what kinds of uses can be built at what, um, what amounts of FAR, but you could come in and build out the full FAR at a, as a commercial use or mix of uses.
I understand. Um, so I'm looking at the, the notes for this evening. And under the specific plan proposed changes, it says that the Planning Commission indicated support for setting a 20 dwelling unit per acre, a minimum density for residential development. And so that's the subset of, if they're doing the residential, this is the minimum that would be required.
Right. So if the developer were to opt to do residential as part of a project, then they would need to provide that at a minimum of 20 dwelling units per acre.
Thank you. What I'm interested in is, is thinking about, um, how we're going to actually reach our goals and making sure we're not just setting ceilings to incentivize growth, we're also making incentivizing from the other direction as well to making, make sure that we are reaching our housing goals that we've set forth in our housing element. And so something I'm curious about, um, if we could get more direction on, and I'm curious if others would feel similarly, is, um, having a proportional housing minimum for those a hundred percent residential areas match proportionally, um, the, the proposed ceiling on density. So in the, in the areas in the sub-districts where we're saying maximum is 100 units per acre, could we have a minimum of 40, 50 units per acre if you're going to do a development? And that's something that makes me feel more comfortable proposing this is spending some time looking at densities for different housing projects and seeing some really beautiful 55, uh, 54 unit per acre, um, residences that, that look great. What I'm nervous about is would a help, would, could a housing developer come in and say, I want to build 20 units per acre, much smaller? And, and not creating the, the diverse kind of income housing that we hope to see downtown because our minimum might be set to just 20.
I'd be curious to know, staffs, is that a thing? What your feedback is. It's an intriguing idea.
Yeah. So if I, I just want to walk through it to make sure I understand correctly. So say a development was proposed in the downtown area and the, the density increase option was available at a hundred dwelling units per acre, then proportionally they would need to provide something higher than 20% minimum for residential units versus if they were to develop in the northeast district at 50 dwelling units per acre, then maybe that would be the 20 dwelling unit per acre minimum floor, something like that.
Yes, but 20% of 100 would be 20 units. And so saying it would be half, it would, the 20 is the, the minimum and then it would go up from there.
Right. Sort of a, a sliding scale up, um, proportionally requiring the minimum residential density to increase with the maximum overall density that would be allowed on a site.
Yes, to ensure that we actually are encouraging the development that we want to be seeing. And I'm curious also to know if that's something that, or the attorneys or planning staff have ever seen before. To know if there is any precedent there.
Just so I understand, Councilmember Door, is what you're trying to avoid? We have, there's like a site that could have 100 units, but the developer only chooses to develop 20. But I guess my question is, wouldn't they be leaving a ton of money on the table? Or are you worried that those 20 would be gigantic units?
That they might be gigantic units, exactly.
Okay. So I guess the goal is to avoid gigantic market rate units.
Gigantic, or maybe, maybe for some reason they're deciding for our, for my portfolio as a developer, this is all I want to make. So it's not just the gigantic ones, but it's encouraging us to actually meet what we, we said we want to do.
I think one option could be that it is a parcel that has been in the family for a number of years and they want to develop it themselves, agreed. And so then they may go more modest, um, then, and I've seen that, um, than they're otherwise would go, like another option might just require them to sell it, but they feel that they can get the loans and, and they can do all that at something that's like, you know, 30 units or, or whatever, 20 units an acre. It's just like, I just, my thinking, um, I just think we can sort of try to over-engineer this stuff so much that there are these unintended consequences that we just don't know about. And, and so, I mean, I think at some point it does just, the market will say that that family will just, y- y- you know, sell. Or the market will say that that family just sits on it because, and that's what we see a lot of. And that like no amount of, uh, of, of, y- y- you know, zoning changes it. And if anything, this whole like now you have to have a minimum. Are we, we already have a minimum, like, right? But now that like it has increased, that y- y- you maybe even more incentivize them just to sit on the property. And, and there's no way we can sort of engineer against that. Or maybe that's what we get in the next housing element iteration. So I, um, I, I agree where you're, you're, I, I understand, I won't say I agree. I understand, it took me a minute, where you're going. It's just that like, I just don't know the unintended consequences. And so that's what makes me, me, uh, skeptical.
I see Mr. Smith maybe has some insight for us.
Yeah, there is one clarification here, and I know this, uh, Table B in the Planning Commission staff report is very dense, a lot of concepts here. But one of the notes, um, and I think this might solve for the question at hand, there is a, um, a sliding scale proposed for the FAR, um, for residential uses. And so, um, basically that would increase on an even gradient. So you would get 53% of the available FAR if you were doing the 20 dwelling units per acre development. And then if you were going to go up to 100 dwelling units per acre, if that was permitted in the sub-district, then you could get the 264% um, FAR to utilize for that development. And that is, uh, that's based on sort of the per unit size of around 1,150 square feet per unit. So that would help moderate those unit sizes.
Uh, Councilmember Nash.
So, um, I just want to make a comment that, um, we actually have been, the city has been very, very good at getting market rate housing. In the last housing cycle, we had 788% of the market rate units, um, produced. And given our pipeline at this point, we should be able to hit the market rate. What we really, really need to incentivize and work on is affordable housing, um, units.
So I'm satisfied that staff has considered this policy issue and come up with a way to address it. Councilmember Door, are you?
Yes, I feel comfortable moving forward. Thank you for entertaining the idea.
Okay, thank you. I think the remaining, oh, the, the remaining thing I have on my list, and then of course, if anyone else has any policy direction they want to give for the downtown specific plan, has to do with the step up FAR, which I think keeps tripping me up on the steps. I keep falling on the steps. So I get that we're trying to incentivize for sale. That sounds like a great idea. The large family units, I think, makes me a little nervous for market rate because what may be large family for some may be like super penthouse, something for another. Um, so I just, again, we're talking market rates, so I'm, I'm still confused. I feel like this needs a little more refinement. What I'd like to see in terms of if we're offering extra stuff, that I like the for sale. I like the fact that they have to do 50% of the, of it residential. But I'm, I'm still tripping up on the large family for market rate. I don't know what my colleagues think about this.
So I definitely agree with you. And I'm also would love some clarification in addition to that. If there's a cap of 65% residential FAR. Please.
Sure. So, um, I think the first, the first question, the concern about getting market rate units that. rate units that might be luxury units for large families, that would, the provision that sort of has the average.
It would be if it's a large family. I think we're worried about a couple moving into a 3,000 square foot thing and just kind of where three separate units could have been built. That might even accommodate families.
So there's the 1,000 square foot average for the unit size. And that's really not, that's getting at sort of a basic two, three bedroom, in fact, a fairly compact one. And so you wouldn't be seeing with that provision in place, sort of large expansive luxury units that average size is going to moderate that.
Okay.
So that answers the question.
Okay. So then, I guess, so we can move this along, I would structure the step up FAR so that it has to be that 50% residential and then require one of the following, either the larger units with the 1,000 average or the for sale. And I don't know if that's how you had written it, but I know there was some conversation at planning about if it was either or, or both, or whatever. And restricting it to the 65%.
So I think there was discussion at the planning commission about, about modifying some of this. I think the idea, so what you, what you just stated about having it be large family units with an average of 1,000 square feet or for sale, you may end up then, if the 1,000 square foot average is not required for for sale units, you could end up with potentially some luxury, very high-end, large for sale units.
Okay. So Councilmember Nash, you, you just said something that was smart, and I agreed, but I couldn't, will you articulate that?
So could we not have the 1,000 square foot average applied to both the for sale and to the rental?
Yeah. The, the way that we're proposing to structure it is that you would have to provide 50 to 65% of the uses in the building for residential. That's one, one requirement that has to be met. The second requirement that has to be met is the average 1,000 square foot lot size. And then the third requirement is sort of the choice between for sale units or the large family units with multiple bedrooms. So the first two are requirements, and then there's kind of a choice between providing for sale units or a large family units.
But they both require that 1,000?
Yes.
Okay. That's what Councilmember Nash was saying. Okay. So if anyone followed that step up FAR conversation, any have, have any added, Councilmember Nash?
Is there a ceiling of 65% residential?
Yeah. So the way that it's set up now, it, there would be sort of the 65% max on that. And the idea there was, again, to, to sort of encourage the step up FAR to be used in mixed use developments so that we are getting some of that commercial, retail, personal services mixed in rather than 100% residential.
So that would be the community serving uses that we've been discussing. Excellent. Thank you.
Not any commercial, not all commercial? Could it include office too? This is going back to, we keep going back to the, yeah.
So I don't think we have clarified that office could not be provided. And that might be an area of direction if there are specific uses.
I'm okay with some office, but I want that retail, community serving.
And one, one caveat is that in the areas where the main street overlay exists, so downtown station areas, there would be the, those qualifications around retail at the ground floor and personal services potentially above.
Okay. I'm okay moving on for now. My head's going to explode, and we have a bunch of other districts to cover unless there's something burning there. Okay. Did I just say that out loud, that my head was going to explode? Okay. Okay. So is there any other final thoughts from anyone on council about the downtown specific plan? Going once, going twice. Okay. Oh, okay. Great. Let's move on to the affordable housing overlay. I think that was the next thing. Actually, Mr. Smith, can you go back to your direction slide? Councilmember Dorr?
May we take a short break?
Okay. So great idea. Let's reconvene at 9:45. I'm going to give everyone nine minutes. Enjoy.
Okay. Having our city council back at our in-person and virtual dais, Mayor Willis, and you may reconvene in the meeting.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Okay. When we last left our council, we had wrapped up our discussion and direction around the El Camino Real downtown specific plan. I believe we're now moving on to commercial. So I'll go through some of the different policy points that I see us needing to discuss, and then we'll see where we go. So staff is asking to consolidate some of the zoning districts to make four of these C districts to allow residential at all of them and to have a minimum of 30 units an acre. So I believe the allowing residential and minimum of 30 units an acre are commitments in the housing element, and I don't see any reason not to consolidate these districts. So are we okay with that? Okay. I'm seeing nods. My one question actually for Mr. Smith, just has to do with the downtown parking lots again. And because we're consolidating those districts to the C2B standards, I don't know if that allows for parking, just parking.
So the, the downtown parking lots are actually part of the downtown subdistrict in the specific plan?
Oh, right. Okay. Never mind. Okay. Fabulous. I remember seeing that. Okay. I think I asked a question, if we could apply a minimum density of 20 units an acre to those commercial, and then you said that could be precluding folks from doing things. So I'm kind of over that unless anyone just loved my idea so much, they want to fight for it. But I'm going to move on. I was wondering, so the affordable housing overlay, our AHO, is applying to the downtown specific plan, where we established it's probably not needed. It's applying to all the housing opportunity sites, and it's applying to our three near downtown. I'd be interested in hearing my colleagues' thoughts on also extending the AHO to all of the commercial parcels that are in those four C zoning districts. So as I mentioned, I think there's about 70 commercial parcels, about 17 are the opportunity sites. And I just think it's a little strange that one building next to another, one could utilize the AHO and one can't. So I see, Mr. Smith, you might have something to say about that.
Yeah, there, there are some concerns about that idea in that a number of these, well, going back to the low VMT map that we shared earlier this evening, just a reminder about that, it's concentrated mainly around downtown El Camino Real. There's a little area by the Sharon Heights Golf and Country Club, and then the VA hospital site and a little portion of Bell Haven. All the other areas outside of those are above our VMT thresholds, so they're not low VMT areas. And the concern would be adding opportunities for additional density in those areas that were not studied as part of the SEIR, the environmental review that was completed, could result in additional significant and unavoidable impacts for VMT. And so that would obviously push us beyond the January 2024 deadline.
And I know you checked with our EIR consultant around the 150 AHO. Did you check on this item as well?
Yeah. For, for the AHO sites that were previously identified, the housing opportunity sites, increasing the AHO to 150 dwelling units per acre, the consultant felt like that would be able to be accommodated, but expanding beyond that to other commercial sites along these other corridors in higher VMT areas, seems like it would trigger potentially more study and take more time.
Okay. Well, I think that the highest priority is making sure we hit that January 24 deadline. I have to say, I think it's a little bit of a bummer. But does anyone else have anything to say about that?
Yeah. I mean, I would add my, my concern, because this then includes the parcels along Willow. And, and so Willow represents road and right across the street from what is, I think, the newest fully affordable housing development project that has been completed in Menlo Park on the VA campus, of which there is going to be another one. And I do have a concern about the concentration of fully 100% affordable housing units without some additional analysis.
That's fine.
And so.
Okay. So I'm over it. And yes.
I'm curious if this applies then also to the Sharon Heights Shopping Center and looking at, or exploring going over in heights or in density. Does that mean because that is not, or is it at low VMT? And what is the optionality there?
It's an opportunity site.
It is an opportunity site. So going beyond the proposed amount would possibly trigger an EIR review?
No, because it is an opportunity site that we studied as part of the EIR, there is the ability to increase the AHO potential for that site if the council directs us to look at that 150 dwelling units per acre and then increasing the height as well. But the reason that, that that would be But the reason that that would be captured is because it is a housing opportunity site.
Thank you.
Oh, you know what? I was going to go from El Camino Real to the AHO, and I apologize. The break confused me. So are you guys okay if we pause on commercial and go back to the AHO? Because I think it's important we resolve that so we can figure out what we're talking about when we get to these other areas. So to Councilmember Doris' thing, so the Planning Commission has recommended that for, that we enable, that we change the multiplier for our local AHO from eighty percent to a hundred and seventy-five percent to enable us to get to one hundred and fifty dwelling units an acre. I'm in favor of that because of the feedback that we've heard from affordable housing developers and the fact that we're able to accomplish that by January 2024. Councilmember Doris, you nod. I'm seeing a nod. And Councilmember Combs.
So I will bring forward the concern I had last, but I think last it was based on my misunderstanding. So actually, those parcels that I was mentioning are opportunity sites. So they would already be subject to the Affordable Housing Overlay and possibly result in a concentration of fully affordable housing or a hundred percent affordable housing units that, I'll be frank, exists in another part of the city, not in my district. So I do think it's important to call that out. So I'll just call out that I was wrong in my concern earlier. I still have the concern, but it seems as though that horse has possibly left the barn.
Yeah, I think that those are privately owned sites. Those aren't, none of those are public. Okay, so I think it would be subject, I mean, if you look at the map, the number of like District Two sites on the opportunity sites is nothing close to what District Four and District Three. So I think it runs the same vulnerability as any of our sites. I think we're doing what we can, especially because downtown, remember, has that AB seventeen sixty-three. So those are like unlimited density. So I don't think you're going to be as vulnerable as or likely.
The only thing, the only difference, and I hear you, and we can move on, is that like there is already one housing development, and one is a hundred percent going to happen, like, right? And so whereas in your scenarios, it's all very theoretical, like where?
Well, we have the downtown parking lots in downtown, and then the SRA site is proposing a land dedication. So and we have all these different policies and programs in place to incentivize other a hundred percent. So I appreciate you being willing to move on. So are you okay then with the hundred and fifty, the Planning Commission recommendation that would then kind of fit with what the affordable housing developers are asking for?
Yeah, I do. Again, I didn't, and just, I didn't see the Planning Commission discussion, but I do want to understand that like, what was the motivation of the discussion? Was the idea this, that it would unlock the private property in ways that a hundred dwelling units an acre does not? Or was it just that like, oh, it'll produce more units, but we still think that this is probably all going to happen on public, currently publicly owned land?
So I think it goes back to conversations that we had with affordable housing developers who told us that ideally a site would be sort of one to two acres in size or somewhere around there. And then also that the densities that they like to develop at are a hundred and fifty dwelling units per acre is kind of like the lower end of that, one and fifty to two hundred is what we've heard.
And just really quickly, and what's the dwelling units an acre on the new Mid Pin projects on Willow Road? Either one, do you know like roughly what those sketch out at?
Let me look. Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We can look that fairly quickly. I want to say it's probably in the thirty to forty range, thirty to forty dwelling units per acre.
Okay. I don't know if I'm there. I don't think it matters, but I don't know if I'm there. I may get there, but I don't know. I'm there at this moment.
Okay. Again, downtown is going to get there anyway. And I just want to remind members of the public when we're talking about a hundred and fifty dwelling units an acre at these opportunity sites outside of downtown, and that's for one hundred percent affordable development. So the, that's just under certain circumstances. Okay, so it sounds like you might not be there, but it sounds like three of us are there. Vice Mayor Taylor, are you comfortable with the AHO going up to a hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Okay. The other?
And just to go back a quick second, the Mid Pin Housing Project is about sixty-one units an acre.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that we've heard from, and I, some developmentally disabled advocates. And I actually went up to Foster City and toured an affordable senior development, and those units tend to be smaller, and so it's helpful for them to be able to have more density per acre to be able to spread the costs out. And some of those populations have different needs in terms of unit space. So it just, again, gives another flexible tool to be used to achieve some of the policy goals laid out in our housing element. Okay, so I think, thanks for letting me detour off to the Affordable Housing Overlay. We're going to now return to commercial. And when we last left off, Councilmember Doris was asking about the Safeway or the Sharon Heights site because that has, that's the C two zoning district, which has a thirty-unit acre base density. But now if we can apply the one hundred and fifty AH, the one seventy-five multiplier with the state density bonus, we're going to get ourselves to a hundred and fifty units an acre. So is that what you were getting at?
Yes, curiosities around that, as well as the height and what are the implications for height?
So building off the height, I heard Brian Kissel call in, and the conversation at the Planning Commission seemed to be coalescing around doubling that thirty feet to sixty feet, which I believe is about five stories. So just wanted to call that out, which to me, another policy goal of mine, I know, and to help my constituents in District Three who are feeling a lot of density coming in their neighborhoods is kind of sharing the love citywide and distributing density in all districts. And so to me, that's a really important policy matter for the Safeway up there. Yeah, so just wanted to see where my colleagues are. So having that base density go up to sixty, knowing that it could get higher with the different incentives potentially that are built in, yeah.
Just to confirm, the height to sixty feet and density at thirty?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry if I misspoke there. It's getting a little late. Councilmember Nash?
I just want to make the point that it doesn't mean that they have to build it that high. It just means that it allows them to build it that high. And.
Right.
And then the other piece is just around the Affordable Housing Overlay with a hundred and fifty dwelling units per acre. That is something where we really need to incentivize and do everything we can to get more affordable housing units so that we can actually meet the RENA numbers, which are very high for our affordable housing.
Councilmember Combs?
So are we doing this based on the Safeway property as commercially zoned? Or is it as an opportunity site? Because I don't, which one is this?
It's yes and yes.
Okay.
So it's an opportunity site and it's commercially zoned.
Okay, and so then if it's an opportunity site, the Affordable Housing Overlay already applies, right? And so, so does it matter as far as like what changes for the commercials only, except for the height?
Well, right now, I don't believe it allows residential. So per the housing element commitments that we made, all of our housing element sites have to allow residential and be a minimum density of thirty. I think if I'm, if I'm getting good at this, okay. Right, and it could end up market rate housing.
And then so, and do we know, because there are some office buildings on Sand Hill that are multi-story, do we know what the highest or the tallest one is?
I looked into this because I was curious myself. There's one that is X-zoned, that is four stories, and all the others are three or less.
Right, until four stories is, we're saying.
That was a special case. It's zoned differently. It's not like the other commercial districts or the commercial zone sites there.
You're actually leaving, bringing me to the height with commercial, which is the next policy question I have. Because I did notice that the heights for these C districts, looks like some of them may only allow two potential stories. Some may allow three, and then one can go up to forty feet, which is, I think, still three stories. I'm just wondering with the densities that could, I guess if you're doing the AHO or the state density bonus, then you get concessions and could increase height. But if we're looking to redevelop some of those commercial properties, I'm just wondering if we want to consider having heights higher.
I know I'm interested in increasing heights, for example, in the Sharon Heights Shopping Center. Looking at examples online of what mixed retail shopping center and housing looks like, you need more than eleven feet to create a shopping center. And so making sure there's flexibility to create an inviting shopping center, and then maybe because it's in the housing element, the maybe affordable housing or other housing on top of that, you would need more than the thirty, thirty-five that is currently in there.
Even for market rate, like retail, mixed use?
That's my sense, and I'm curious if that aligns with what the planning folks have seen as well.
I think generally that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking like allow up to three or four stories. Like if there's going to be a first floor retail, maybe four stories. But, because I know like Flood School, for example, I think that's four stories that they're going to be proposing. So we are seeing our neighborhoods living next to four-story buildings. Anyway, just curious to hear your thoughts.
And can I clarify, are we talking, so I've heard discussions around the C two, which essentially would just be Sharon Heights Shopping Center and the height there. But then it sounds like there's also a separate discussion about the other zoning districts, increasing those heights as well to something.
So I think Sharon Heights is like a special one that should be higher. But even on the, like a Willow Market on Middlefield and Willow, like, how high could that go without freaking people out? Three, four stories? If it was going to be redeveloped with first floor Willow Market returns and then some residential on top?
Right, the way that the C two B is set up, which would be the model for these other districts or sort of, they would all be combined under C two B. You can do thirty feet if you're just doing a commercial structure, and then you get a ten-foot increase in height if you're doing a mixed-use incorporating residential. So that could give you, you know, three, maybe four stories max, potentially, under the existing C two B regulations.
Yeah, can I, I go back to Sharon Plaza really quickly. So what's, or though, actually before I get there, what's the highest height of one of the residential or the residential component of Willow Village? My thinking is like, in theory, if you, and I don't know, like if I see that plaza or shopping center, it is being fully redeveloped, like, like as a sort of village. And so why would it be any less than what we would allow for Willow Village? Which similarly, like, I don't think anyone's going to like sort of just stack a bunch of apartments in the parking lot. I think the whole thing will be redeveloped and very much like Willow Village. And so I think that I would be interested in having it the same.
So just going off of memory here, but we think the highest building in the Willow Village project is around eighty feet.
So I don't see why.
It's about seven stories.
Couldn't be eighty feet, to be honest.
I'm supportive of the sixty-ish that was discussed as a maximum, appreciating, and I'm thinking about folks who are listening in here of doing our fair share as a district because other districts have historically had a lot more affordable housing, a lot more development. That was the plan here, is that we're sharing our development across the city and that we need to build housing where it makes the most sense, and it makes the most sense where there is transit, like the Samtrans buses, where there's shopping available, where there's grocery available. And so this is the highest priority opportunity site for me in our district. And so I would be supportive of exploring higher heights and greater densities than what is currently proposed with the idea that this could produce a better option for our community as a whole.
Councilmember Combs? So it sounds like, yeah, I don't know. Councilmember Nash, do you have anything?
I just wonder if this is something, would it make sense to do a base and bonus level here?
I'm curious if there already is, though, with the Affordable Housing Overlay, basically. No, so there could be the additional growth beyond what is laid out here.
So I'm thinking base and bonus for market rate.
Thank you. So the question is, can we do something higher than to Councilmember Doris' willingness to explore increased densities for the Sharon Heights Shopping Center? Is the idea to have something higher than what is being proposed as the bonus level development? Bonus level density, I should say.
Well, it's, I saw it as another way to look at variable heights. And I'll leave it at that. I don't know if it makes, I don't, so I will say, I am much more comfortable with sixty feet than I am with eighty feet, just right off, you know, without having looked at it more. And that's why I was wondering if perhaps this was a way to do sixty feet base. I'm just, I mean, basically, we need, we need professional help on this. But I'm thinking more like sixty feet base, eighty feet bonus, I don't know. If we even choose to go that way, and I don't know if it makes sense there.
Yeah, I think if we go too tall, then we're going to be out of proportion to our density units an acre. And then we need to raise the density units an acre at the base, which then I think would trigger the EIR potentially, so.
Well, I will say then, I'm much more comfortable with sixty feet.
I think given the analysis that's been done here and the doubling of it already, I'm comfortable with the sixty. I totally hear what Councilmember Combs is saying with Willow Village.
I do want to say that like, because I do think it's important to point out like the doubling and the doubling from thirty, which it never should have been.
Thirty was abysmal, totally.
But then, so then we get credit for doubling because it was set way lower than it should have been.
That's fair.
And way lower than what we have said is okay at the other end of the city. And so I just, but this is the broken record of Menlo Park. Despite the council, council members may change, but.
Right, well, I think you can't upzoning downtown quite a bit to address that affirmatively furthering for housing issue. And I do think there is an argument to be made around jobs being, I mean, there's VC firms up on Sand Hill Roads. You could argue that there's jobs there, but there's a huge high-tech. But there's a huge high-tech company that employs like 30,000 employees, like right at Willow Village as well.
And I think you, the downtown upzoning you get credit for, for the upzoning you had already done before Willow Village. But Willow Village resets it. And so, yeah, yeah, the downtown zoning only brings you to even for what the past upzoning of Bayfront. And so I just, again, we can move on. But I just want to say that like, the fact that it was like 30, 35 feet is kind of shocking, ever. And, and so for me, that's then, then we get credit for 60, when, like I say, I just think, again, if that, and this is me looking at a full redevelopment of the entirety of that parcel into a village-like thing. And so I just.
I really appreciate the point you're making. I don't disagree with where you're going with it. I think, given what the community outreach that's been done with this, I just think that, yes, Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and I would like to support councilmember Combs. And I think that it's important that we look at what our options are and our opportunities as opposed to capping things before we see the full potential of a potential project. So I think it's fair to look at increased density, increased height. We're not approving a project, we are looking at what the possibilities are.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. I appreciate that comment. And I'm fully supportive of us exploring ways to increase the density proportionally and make, you know, make a full faith effort to ensure that these opportunity sites have the opportunity for projects to come forward to be explored with us. And so I'm encouraging of us to expand that, that height. As a starting place, I'm supportive of 60. But if there were further city staff discussions that said, really, the biggest opportunity is 70 or 80, then I'm open to hearing and talking more. But I'd say 60 is where I feel comfortable right now, saying the max would be. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
I just want to say, I'm very supportive of affordable housing and getting density and heights with affordable housing. We need affordable housing. I believe we are going to be meeting our market rate housing. And while housing is important, I think that we really should be focusing incentives and trying to work toward affordable housing options.
Yes, maybe a clarification then that I would appreciate is, if we said now the new base that could be for low market rate or at market rate, it would be 60 feet tall. If they had the affordable housing overlay on top of that, what does that mean the ultimate number would be? Does that mean it would add another three, three stories? So 30 more feet and everything else as well?
So thank you. So I believe this area is not within a half mile of a major transit stop, so it does not automatically have the 33 feet or the three foot, three stories sort of bonus, if you will. City Attorney Doherty mentioned earlier, there are allowances for waivers.
So I was just stating, as City Attorney Doherty mentioned earlier regarding state density bonus law and AHO, that development up would be applicable to apply for concessions, waivers, or incentives. And height could be one of those, so long as it helps for the affordable development to actually occur. So what that height increases, generally we do it proportional. But if City Attorney Doherty has more on that, maybe she can further elaborate on the use of state density bonus law for a height waiver.
Yeah, Ms. Chai, I agree with your general summary. That is how it would generally work with some nuances and specifics. But height could be waived or reduced to allow the affordable project to move forward.
May I just seek some clarification? So I'm hearing some conversation around an increase in height without an increase in density. So is the 30 dwelling to the acre for the Sharon Heights Shopping Center, what, so? Just trying to gauge if 60 feet is an appropriate height for 30 dwelling units to the acre?
Are we allowed to raise that base density without triggering the EIR issues?
We don't think so. We can double check. But again, this is one that's not in the low VMT area. And so increases in density has a little bit more sensitivity.
Thank you. Well, given the research I did about density in different units, there's a project called Legacy Livermore that I found that is extremely beautiful. It's three stories tall and is 55 units an acre. And seeing an example like that makes me more encouraged that there could be beautiful, higher-density housing to help our district do our fair share through the housing element that would be higher density than the 30 units per acre that is currently proposed. And so I would be, I would be interested in seeing what increase you think wouldn't trigger EIR and what that upper range might be, would be helpful to know. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd be supportive of seeing that and then seeing with the 60 height limit and even the 80 height limit, if we're allowed to have a menu when it comes back for that site. And then also the residents, I'm sure, might have thoughts about this as well. Just so that there's some transparency on what we're contemplating.
And I'll just flag, that's something I'm grateful for, is that this is just the study session, so we have time as a community to continue the conversation, talk about what sounds right, explore other options. And this is actually maybe a good moment to flag. I think to increase transparency to the public in these future conversations that we have as a community, that the city staff are helping put together, it would be helpful to see pictures of what these housing developments look like, what sample housing developments look like at different sizes. There was a paper prepared that shows different projects that are over 100 units per acre. But I think seeing something between 30 and 60 or so would also be extremely helpful so people can understand and visualize how that might fit in with a community. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've, so just, just so I understand the timeline and the process, this is a study session. We're giving you some kind of specific, relatively baked direction. We're also asking you to look into a couple of things here and there. The next time we see you, what is that meeting going to look like? And how close are we to January 24? Because if we're saying, oh, you're going to come back, is it going to be one of those meetings where you come back, you have the ordinance written up, and then like, if we make any changes, we have to like take a break, the attorney makes some things, and then we're like staying late at night to make some, or is there like going to be a meeting, and then three weeks later or something, there's the final, final meeting? Just trying to get a sense of where we're headed, because the more we give you this like, look into this, like if we're going to be crunching up against that January 24, which I think is the number one priority, I'm a little nervous about all these check into this, check into that directions we're giving.
So I think the idea that we had in mind was to come back to you with ordinances drafted, specific language, and that would be in the fall. You know, Planning Commission asked for us to have something ready by October. That might be even a little ambitious. So it would be sort of in those later months of the year that you would be seeing these draft ordinances, again, based on the feedback we get this evening.
Do you think there'll be a buffer, though, if we choose not to pass it that night? Are we going to have another opportunity to have it come back for our first reading? That's what I'm trying to get at.
If I may, Mayor Wilson, I mean, a lot of it's going to depend on what that direction is and how long it's going to take to make any modifications to the zoning that you direct. I mean, as you know, we are recommending that we move forward with the zoning changes, you know, at a minimum that are necessary to provide the capacity to meet the RENA by January 31, 2024. We're already at the end, you know, of August, so we're in the fall, you know, in a couple of weeks here. So I jumped in front of staff here, and they may have something to add to that. But we're going to be limited probably to one Planning Commission meeting, frankly, for their recommendation to the council, coming to the council in November, and then we're up against the holidays. So we are, we are really, you know, bringing you this item tonight to try and get specific direction so that we can hit that January 31, 2024 deadline with a little bit of a buffer. So we're not, you know, behind the eight ball.
Just a quick question, does this have to go to the Planning Commission again?
Yes, so the Planning Commission has to make a recommendation at a Notice Public Hearing to the city council on any revisions to the specific plan and the zoning ordinance.
And so the direction where we're like, maybe we'll do 60, maybe we'll do 80. When you write up the ordinance, will it have option A, option B? Or are you just going to make, like, what is that going to look? I'm just trying to understand how the direction we're giving you, how that works in your work.
So Mayor Wilson, members of the council, it somewhat depends on what the direction is, right? So the 60, 80 issue, I'm anticipating that we would return to you with an ordinance with a staff recommendation built into that ordinance, and then a discussion in the staff report that says, hey, you know, on, whatever date today is still, the 22nd, you requested that we explore this other option, and then an explanation of why or why not that option made it into the draft ordinance.
And then totally hypothetically, if we decided we didn't want to go with staff recommendation and we wanted to do the other thing, would you then, would you already have that wording written out? And you would be ready to pop it in, or would it be like this whole?
I think we would definitely try and have that prepared so that we're ready for that eventuality. And I think I should also clarify, I mean, we're envisioning that the next step is the Planning Commission. So we're not coming back to the council for direction on what's going to the Planning Commission again. We're drafting, going to the Planning Commission, getting the Planning Commission's recommendation, and then coming back to the council.
Okay, that's really helpful. I appreciate that detour. And we appreciate how hard you're working to get us to the finish line by January 24, really, we are. Okay, so I think we talked about height, looking forward to seeing staff recommendation. The other big issue, two more things that I see in the commercial thing to discuss. One has to do with incentivizing neighborhood-serving retail and the other about parking minimums. So starting with incentivizing neighborhood-serving retail, wondering if there's an incentive or an overlay or some mechanism where we make sure that we're not going to lose, again, the ice cream shops. Although I don't think we have that many ice cream shops, but I'm looking forward to the gelato counter opening at Spring Line. But you know what I'm getting at. So I guess, I think there's, people want neighborhood-serving retails to have, and I think that's a direction that the Planning Commission was also pushing on. So I'm curious if you have recommendations, or do you just want to hear that there's support for some kind of incentive for that, or what direction do you want from us around that?
We haven't come up with any specific recommendations for this evening. So we would be open to direction to explore that. I would say that for any sites on the site inventory, and some of those would be the commercial sites interspersed throughout some of these corridors, they can do 100% residential development, and we cannot require them to integrate any commercial retail uses. So we have to keep that in mind as well if we were to do.
But we could incentivize it.
Yes.
Okay. I'd be in favor of looking ways to incentivize it, even on the opportunity sites, if possible. I wonder if my colleagues are, I'm seeing a nod.
Well, would it, I mean, I can understand sort of incentivizing in connection with certain thoroughfares, but like, like on all of the opportunity sites, they're kind of like all over the place in some places.
These would be all the commercial ones. So there's 17 commercial opportunity sites.
But even those, are they in places where we, are all of them in places we'd want to incentivize?
So I believe there's like four up on Sand Hill Road, the, I happen to commit this memory. The Safeway Shopping Center, there's Middlefield and Willow. So like some of the office buildings. There's Willow Road, so like the urgent care thing, I don't know, like some hospital thing next to the gas station, and a couple other ones there. And I think that pretty much, I don't know, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that pretty much is those 17 sites. And Burgess, there's an area across the street from Burgess Park where like the blood center is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I'm supportive.
Ms. Chow, did you guys?
Thank you. We were, we were just looking at our opportunity sites and, and we need to go and confirm, but some of the existing sites, perhaps like on Sand Hill Road, the existing zoning does not allow for retail uses. And so.
There's like two that are like administrative-professional, two of the fours commercial zoning districts are like administrative-professional, and then two of them are more like neighborhood-serving retail of the four C districts that we're consolidating into.
Right, so you're, just for clarification, focusing on the C zoning districts, the commercial zoning districts that are being combined into the C2B, not the ones that are not part of that.
Well, I would say either all of, all of those 17, or if we're not allowed to have all those 17, at least the ones that are C2 and C2B, that are the commercial, that are the retail-y ones. It'd be great if we could convert one of the offices into retail and residential, but councilmember Combs?
And those are all opportunity sites or not?
So I feel like I'm like answering questions I might have not, maybe above my pay grade, but I believe.
Sure, we have a diagram that might help just with the conversation. Great, so here shows the various C commercial zoning districts. So the designations are noted by different colors, and the crosshatching identifies a housing opportunity site.
So the opportunity sites are a subsection of the C districts. So if we were to do the incentivizing to keep, to have retail, it would apply to all the commercial, not just the opportunity sites?
I think it, the way that we have envisioned the zoning changes is that they would be comprehensive across the zoning districts and not, not just specific to opportunity sites. So I think that would be generally how we would seek to apply it, to make sure that the rules were clear for everyone.
I feel like people are getting a little tired up here.
And Mayor Wilson, I think that this is very clear to the council, but I feel like I want to say it out loud just to make sure. You know, on those housing opportunity sites, as you know, we have to allow 100% residential. And we can allow for 50% of the property being, we can require 50% residential. We have to allow 100% residential. And I'm hearing that the council understands that and that you're looking for ways for us to incentivize areas that are currently zoned commercial, that are going to be subject to these rezonings, that there's some incentivization for either retaining or developing neighborhood-serving retail in those areas. I think that's something we're really going to have to think about. We were, we're just sort of looking at each other, like we're trying to figure out what those incentives would be. And that may be, you know, something, obviously something we're going to have to return to you with. But I hear the council's desire, which is we understand what the. Um, but I, I hear the council's desire, which is we understand what the Housing Element Law is requiring us to do, but what we want to do is still make walkable neighborhoods that have things people want to go to and have vital, um, kind of commercial uses as well along those corridors.
Yeah, that's the policy desire, and then we'll leave it up to you to see if you can come up with something creative to get us there and comply with state law, um, so, and meet the January 24 deadline. So good luck to you, but, um, that's, that's, I think, what we're, what we're hoping for. Okay, thank you. Um, and then, um, I think the, the parking minimums was the other C question. And this was a Planning Commission, I think the Planning Commission recommended some of them, not all of them, recommended eliminating parking requirements. Again, a developer can and may build parking for their own market needs, um, and financing needs. But if somebody wants to have a corner store that people are going to walk to, to not require necessarily the parking. So, um, I would be in support of that for the commercial. Um, curious to know my colleague's thoughts.
I am in support of that as well. Um, I think it makes sense to let the market help, help let individual developers and businesses decide what they would like to have on parking and removing that minimum.
So just so I make sure I'm understanding, so this is, because state law already removes it in certain, uh, proximity to transit. And so this would remove it across all opportunity sites or across everything, or?
I think we're talking about all commercial, so the commercial parcels that were on that map.
Okay, so as they transition to residential, there would not be a requirement for any parking? Sure.
Again, they can still, the developer can still and probably likely will build. I mean, we've heard from at least one developer, um, lane partners, that they are building more than Plan Commission actually, they're proposing more than the Plan Commission's actually wanting them to. Um, Vice Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson.
Thank you. Is, are there any examples that can be included in the next staff report, not necessarily this evening?
About the parking minimums?
Yes, about not having parking, um, and a business being successful.
Uh, well, I think that's a great question, and we can ask staff, but there might be some buildings that don't have parking, but I would imagine that most will build the parking anyway, but yeah.
And, and Mayor Wilson, I don't know, members of the council, I don't know if this actually addresses the vice mayor's comment, but, you know, the city of San Jose recently did away with parking requirements altogether. I'm not aware of any recent developments that have come after that. You know, that was a few months ago, so I don't know that we have specific examples of, of, you know, development that's occurred under that regime, um, and whether or not those businesses have been successful. And I, I'm, I'm not aware of any, um, that I've worked on that, um, have that, have that type of requirement or lack of requirement, if you will.
My question is, but does San Jose ban overnight parking?
Fair. Yeah. Um, okay, so I covered all the parking, oh, sorry, all the commercial policy questions that I had on my list. Were there any additional commercial tweaks, comments that council members wanted to say before we move on to R3? Okay, so we're moving on to R3. Um, so per the commitments made in the Housing Element, we are required to allow up to 30 units an acre and waive the 10,000 square foot min, maximum, minimum, something, um, around the downtown R3s. So that kind of we have to do. There's a question related that the Planning Commission, again, raised, and I believe someone raised here about, um, extend the 30 units an acre to citywide. So I guess my first question, Mr. Smith, is talking about the EIR, is that something doable in the EIR?
That, that would be the impediment to doing that. There are a number of R3, um, clusters and corridors that are in District 1, which we didn't even study in the, the SEIR, um, and in some of these higher VMT areas. And so, um, similar to what, what we talked about for other sites that are not in the low VMT areas that, that could extend our environmental review beyond January of next year.
Okay, so that might be moot then, given that top priority of ours to get this in on time. And then did we already talk about the heights for R3? I can't remember. I think we did, 30 or 40. Um, okay, so any other R3-related comments? Direction anyone wants to give? Councilmember Nash?
I may have just missed this, but, so are you saying that we cannot do R3 at 30 units per acre across the city, or was it, there are two parts to it that we couldn't do?
So as part of these changes that we're implementing for the Housing Element update, it couldn't be included as part of that, um, because it would bump up against the, the timeline.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not seeing other R3 comments?
I do have a R3 comment. I'm curious if, um, there would be a way to continue to explore that outside of the scope of the city, uh, side of the scope of the Housing Element process, doing a, a bifurcation of sorts, um, if we wanted to, if, if folks were interested in looking at R3 in a deeper way. So prioritize focusing on our opportunity sites and the other things we've talked about today. And then separately, at a later date, create an addendum to the EIR, um, that looks at increasing the R3. I asked the city attorney about opportunities for that and would, would love clarification and a confirmation that that is an opportunity that could be explored if the city council wanted to, uh, explore this other zoning opportunity.
I actually think the city manager, um, might want to address this because this is a question I had. Because at the Planning Commission, there was this conversation about hitting up to the EIR constraints, and the Planning Commission's like, great, we'll just bifurcate it, we'll do a phase two, we'll get the Housing Element in for state compliance by January 24, and then we'll get going right away with another EIR addendum, and we'll do all the other things that we want to do. And I think the city manager has a response to that. Sure, Mr. Murphy, do you want to apply on that idea?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's, um, uh, it's definitely something that we would, uh, it, it, it is possible, it is something that, that could be done, but as, as a practical matter, given the amount of sprinting that's going to be done between now and January, just on this topic, let alone other things that are a complete focus of the Community Development Department, as a practical matter, that's going to be extremely, extremely, extremely difficult to, uh, to do. So, um, ha- happy to put it in a bike rack for future and things like that. We can see what the future holds for us, but based off everything I'm aware of right now, that, that's going to be extremely difficult. Uh, one kind of gen- general friendly reminder to, uh, a lot of our overall Housing Element success. We've, you've, you've heard some discussion about changes to BMR guidelines, you know, that's on the list. There's ADU ordinance that needs to be updated. But one of the, the key things to the overall Housing Element success is spending the collective time that's needed on the downtown parking plazas. And that's like a major, major, major work effort that, um, needs to get in motion and will consume a vast amount of, uh, staff capacity, um, after the, the January 31 deadline that we're talking about. So based off of all of that, happy to kind of keep that on the horizon. If the opportunity presents itself, that we can take that on, great, but at this point in time, it's highly unlikely.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification, and I'm excited to, uh, have our time spent on other pressing issues.
And, and can I just point out that the use permit revision is, is in line in front of a, a general look at, at R3?
Yeah, I think this gets, basically whatever doesn't get into this January 24 timeline, then kind of goes into the hopper of projects, priorities, da, 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 da. So I know we all want to cram in as much as we can, um, but I think we want to keep the staff we have, and we want to keep them relatively happy in it to be here. So we really appreciate what they're doing to get us over the finish line, and we know that they're caring a lot, so. Okay, um, but totally get where you're, we all want so much. Yeah. Okay, so I think we were done with the R3. So I have a category called Other of things I picked out of the staff reports and maybe in your presentation that I just want council confirmation on. So reusing sites from the fifth element, making them by right if there's 20% affordable. Again, I think we're committed to that. We don't really have a choice, but I think it was on the list. I'm seeing nods. Um, uh, the overlay district to be created for carve-out development to use only one or two acres on larger sites. Again, I think we're committed to that as a Housing Element policy or program, but I think that's called out. So just wanted to hit that. And then zoning ordinance related to childcare would allow large family childcare by right. Again, it's a state law, we're committed to that. And I think we all know how important childcare is, so I'm glad that we're getting into compliance. Is there anything else that someone thought of related to our Housing Element compliance or zoning that we've covered tonight that they are interested in direction being given that hasn't come up? And Councilmember Doris, see your finger on the button.
Along with possibly, uh, if it is not too much work, having some pictures of projects that are between 30 and 60 units per acre, just so people can understand what that conceptually means. Also including a link to the city zoning map, the interactive GIS, I think it'd be helpful so people know where to go to find that information. Someone reached out to the CCIN saying that it was difficult to understand where to find this other related resource. And so I want to make sure that it's as easy as possible for people to find that. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I just, I know that we're, um, rushing or getting to this January 2024 deadline is important, but is that based on the assumption that HCD approves our current application? I mean, because if they don't approve it, right, then it doesn't matter, right, that January deadline? Or not that it doesn't matter, but.
So as you know, the, the deadline to adopt your, um, zoning changes, i- if you had been certified by HCD by May 31st of 2023, would have been three years. Given that we weren't certified, it's one year from the statutory deadline for adoption, so it would be January 31st, 2024. And, you know, the programs that we have and that HCD is reviewing have that deadline. The, I think the flip to your question is if we don't do it, we can't be certified by HCD, um, until the rezoning is done. And if we do get certified by HCD prior to the zoning deadline, we can be decertified if we don't get it done. And there's other penalties that go along with that as well. So the, the repercussions are relatively large.
But then so if we pass these zoning changes and we don't get certified on this, this latest application, um, then obviously we'll have to go possibly through this exercise again.
If there were changes to the programs that were identified in the Housing Element that were required by HCD, we'll know more about that, um, next Tuesday, I think, when we're scheduled to get our 60-day review letter back from HCD. I don't know that, I don't think we've had any indications that some, certainly none of the by right things are going to change because those are Housing Element law. Um, and, you know, the, the things that the council's considering that go above and beyond the 30 dwelling units per acre aren't currently being required by HCD, um, other than some of the changes in the affordable housing overlay. So I, the theoretical answer to your question is yes, you know, we could be back at this if HCD requires modifications to programs that, um, are tied to these rezonings. We don't anticipate that, but we don't have a, an answer to that question yet.
Okay, um, so I think, um, I would actually like to check in with Mr. Smith. Um, I, I said I would go through and recap, but, oh my God, don't make me do that, please. Do you feel like you have this direction, and are you feeling like you have consensus on key items? I mean, maybe not consensus, but like majority direction on things. We might all be 100%, but there were three or four of us that wanted to go one way or the other.
Yes, so we presented a lot of information to you, and then we got a lot of feedback from you. And so we appreciate that. And I feel like with, uh, the key areas that we were looking for, we got a good sense for whether there was a majority of, of support for that. And so I'll check in with the others on the team to make sure there are no additional clarifications needed, but maybe one?
So, yeah, I agree. Thank you very much for spending this evening with, with us and providing us guidance on preparing the draft ordinances to bring back. I think the one, um, where there was, I, I think there was a couple of different ones that had, um, some varying degrees of consent, but I think the one we just want to confirm is that Upzone for the Southeast and Northeast are the specific plan that was, um, upzoning to those. Did we have, and it was proportional to the others, if we heard correctly? There are nods for those at home who can't see our faces.
Okay. And while you're checking in with each other, I'll check in with my team. So City Council, this is your last chance. Um, anything else? Uh, Vice Mayor Taylor? Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Smith and Ms. Chow, are you, you got everything you need?
Circling back to the AHO for a minute, earlier in the evening, we heard discussion about providing examples of the 50% state density bonus mixed income developments and giving some sort of examples of what that, that would look like. And it sounded like there was interest in maintaining a mixed income approach, so wanted to confirm that.
I'm interested in maintaining a mixed income approach because I think we need those tools because we don't know exactly how we're going to get to our affordable numbers. So I'm seeing nods, I'm seeing nods. Thank you.
All right, I think that's everything.
And confirming that no motion is needed on anything tonight. Okay. Well, I just want to, um, on behalf of the City Council, um, express our deepest appreciation. You're thanking us for being here with you tonight, but thank you for being here with us tonight. And this is a tremendous, um, work product that you've done, um, at the end of a tremendous process. So, um, we're almost there, hang in there, um, and we look forward to seeing what you come up with, with all of our direction. So with that, it is 10:50, and I am adjourning tonight's meeting. Thank you.